And we're live.
Hello, good morning, everyone. Welcome to the April thirteenth, two thousand twenty-one Board of Supervisors meeting for Ventura County. Could we please have a roll call?
Yes, Supervisor Laver.
Here.
Supervisor Long.
Here.
Supervisor Huber.
Here.
Supervisor Ramirez.
Yes, I'm here.
Chair Parks.
Here, thank you. Good morning, everyone. Let's begin with our pledge of allegiance then, if you'll please join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. And at this time, do we have a motion for the minutes of our meeting of March twenty-third?
Huber, so moved.
Long, a second.
Thank you Supervisor Huber Supervisor Long, let's have a roll call.
Supervisor Laver.
Yes.
Supervisor Long.
Yeah.
Supervisor Huber.
Yes.
Supervisor Ramirez.
Yes.
Chair Parks.
Yes, thank you. And now we go to that time on our agenda, which is our minutes. Do we have a motion? I'm sorry, the agenda review with Mr. Powers?
Yes, thank you Chair Parks, board members. Item eight, opening received or report regarding novel coronavirus, a comment letter from Judy Bruce has been submitted. Item twenty-seven, Human Services Agency, authorization for the Human Service Agency to serve as the county sponsor for the Housing for the Harvest Program. A board letter, exhibit one, and a comment letter from Tim Totten have been submitted. Additionally, agenda page eight has been revised to reflect the change in the subject of the board letter. We request to hear this item right after the COVID update. That's item twenty-seven. Item thirty-one, CEO's office, adoption of a resolution authorizing the execution of an agreement. The California Department of Housing and Community Development requests removal from the agenda. It's item thirty-one. Item thirty-four, Healthcare Agency, adoption of a resolution to add six hundred and ten point nine full-time equivalent positions for the healthcare agencies. Ambulatory care clinic integration project, revised board letter and revised exhibit one have been submitted. Additionally, agenda page nine has been revised to reflect the change in the subject of the board letter. Item thirty-six, CEO's office, receiving file fiscal year two thousand twenty-one dash twenty-two, Department of Airports budget presentation PowerPoint's been submitted. Item thirty-seven, RMA, public hearing to consider amendments to articles of the Ventura County non-coastal zoning ordinance. Revised board letter, PowerPoint, and comment letter from Luis Lombada have been submitted. Item thirty-eight, Supervisor Laver, public hearing regarding adoption of an amendment to Ventura County ordinance. Four, five, six, nine, restricting parking in designated areas of the county. A PowerPoint and a comment letter from Luis Lombada have been submitted. Items forty-three and forty-five, closed session items regarding labor negotiations, request both be removed from the agenda. That's item forty-three and forty-five. And finally, addendum agenda, item forty-six, conference legal counsel anticipated litigation. A matter related to significant exposure to litigation. And that's it. Thank you.
Okay, that's all, huh?
Yeah, right. Just about, just a few things.
Do any of the supervisors have any requested changes, or do we have a motion to accept the revised agenda?
So moved, Huber.
Thank you.
All second.
Thank you Supervisor Laver. And with that, can we have a agenda as revised?
Supervisor Laver.
Yes.
Supervisor Long.
Yes.
Supervisor Huber.
Yes.
Supervisor Ramirez.
Yes.
Chair Parks.
Yes, thank you for that. We've got a long meeting, a big meeting, and we'll go right to it. Let's start, which is, it's a wonderful beginning for all our meetings. It's a moment of inspiration. And I'm actually going to turn this over to Supervisor Ramirez, who came up with this suggestion. And I am so glad that we were able to have this for us this morning. So Supervisor Ramirez, would you like to introduce our speaker for our moment of inspiration?
Yes, and would, is she on, on, in the queue?
Yes, she is.
Okay, great. Good, good morning, everyone. And thank you Supervisor Parks for agreeing to invite this young woman from, actually, she actually, she lives in Oxnard, but I'll have to say she's actually in Supervisor Laver's district, just over the line. On, in the, in his district. Her name is Montserrat Kawansi. She is the winner of the Ventura County Poetry Out Loud competition. It's a national recitation program. Initiated by the National Endowment for the Arts, along with the Poetry Foundation sponsored by California, by the, in California, by the California Arts Council. She will recite her two winning poems. I know this young woman. She is very active in her school. She goes to Oxnard College as a high school student. I think it's called Oxnard Middle School. And she has great plans for herself, which I hope to help her with. And this is, I understand, this is National Poetry Month. And just very appropriate, we have her reciting some great poems. I've listened to her before. It's inspiring. So, Montserrat Kawansi, take the stage.
Hello, everyone.
Good morning.
Good morning. As Supervisor Ramirez mentioned, my name is Montserrat Kawansi. And I was, I am the winner of the Ventura County Poetry Out Loud. And I'm going to be talking a little bit about the importance of poetry and why I think it's important for me. And then I'm going to be reciting two of my poems. So I gotta be honest here for a second. Before Poetry Allowed, I had no interest in like poetry. It was not hobby of reading or analyzing poetry. I would only read poetry in my English class because it was required. But apart from that, I never really read poetry or poems or read about other poets. So it's a little funny to me now because I won Poetry Allowed for reciting a poem. So, but as a disclaimer, I am not in no way a professional. But what I've learned from my experience of Poetry Out Loud and the importance of poetry poems is that poetry is a different method of self-expression. Just like our clothing style, how we choose to express ourselves through our clothing or through music. Poetry is a way, it's a different method of self-expression. And poetry isn't all about analyzing and, and I learned that through Poetry Out Loud. But it's rather being able to write your feelings and thoughts about a specific topic or many different subjects. And while reading a poem, being able to put yourself in the position of the writer, reading as if you were the writer, connecting with the writer or connecting with a certain stanza or connecting with the poem overall and being able to reflect with, reflect back in your past and look for a scenario in your life where you can connect with that poem, that poem that you chose to read. Oh, thinking, oh, I went through that similar scenario or that similar experience, but maybe with different little details. And connecting to those feelings of the poem or connecting to that specific stanza of a poem. So that's really what I've learned through Poetry Out Loud while reading through poems and choosing my poem. And basically just leaving the understanding, the, yeah, the, basically leaving the poem to your own understanding and can be whatever you want it to be. Maybe it's something very different from what the poem had written and its intentions. But it can, you can convert it into something new. So for many, poetry is actually a way of coping and coping mental or physical issues or family issues. Like I've used poetry now to kind of cope, cope with too much homework or et cetera, et cetera. So poetry is a different way of expressing yourself and it's a different method of art, other than music or paintings. And yeah, that's poetry for me. And that's why I think poetry is important. Because a lot of people use it as a coping mechanism. And it's not necessarily bad because we learn a lot from the complexity of poetry. So that's how I see poetry and my own thoughts about it. And so now I'll be reciting "April Midnight" by Arthur Simons. Side by side through the streets at midnight. Roaming together through the tumultuous night of London in the miraculous April weather. Roaming together under the gaslight. Days work over how the spring calls to us here in the city. Calls to the heart, from the heart of a lover. Cool, the wind blows fresh in our faces, cleansing and tranceing. After the heat and the fumes and the footlights where you dance and I watch you dancing. Good it is to be here together, good to be roaming. Even in London, even at midnight. Lover-like in the lovers' glooming, you the dancer and I the dreamer. Children together when they were lost in the night of London in the miraculous April weather. So that's one of my poems. And the other poem I recited is called "As Kingfishers Catch Fire" by Gerard Manley Hopkins. As kingfishers catch fire, dragonflies draw flame. A stumbled over rim and roundy well stones ring. Each tuckstring tells, each hung bell's bows, one finds tongue to fling abroad its name. Each mortal thing does one thing in the same. Deals out that being indoors, each one dwells, selves goes itself, myself, it speaks and spells. Crying, what I do with me for that I came. I say more than just man justices. Keeps grace that keeps all his goings graces. Acts in God's eye, what in God's eye he is, Christ. For Christ placed in ten thousand places, lovely in limbs and lovely in eyes. Not his to the Father, through the features of men's faces. And those are both of my poems.
Thank you, Monzi. My favorite, one of my favorite poets, Gerard Manley Hopkins. Thank you very much. Thank you Supervisor.
Thank you. Thank you so much for coming this morning and gracing us with those poems. So appreciate it. And congratulations to you. And I also look forward to seeing how your career ends up. And Supervisor Ramirez will be a wonderful mentor for you. Thank you for coming. At this time then, we can go move on. And this will be to our consent agenda items. And these would be items twelve through twenty-six, except I believe we did remove the one item. See.
We had a speaker on item fifteen, but she has not appeared yet, so.
And with that then, shall we go to our, the consent agenda items? Do we have a motion?
Long, no motion to approve.
Second, Ramirez here.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second then. And could we please have a roll call?
Supervisor Laver.
Yes.
Supervisor Long.
Yes.
Supervisor Huber.
Yes.
Supervisor Ramirez.
Yes.
Chair Parks.
Yes, thank you. And now with that, we'll go on to our coronavirus update. That's on item eight, and I will turn it over to Mr. Powers.
Thank you Chair Parks, board members, community members. Thank you for the time this morning. And with, of course, the headlines about the CDC's recommendation regarding the Johnson and Johnson vaccine. We've asked Dr. Levin to address this matter right up front. So I'll turn it over to Dr. Levin. Thank you.
Mike, I'm sorry, Dr. Levin just stepped off for just a minute. He'll be right back.
Okay.
Okay. Very good. We'll, we'll hold for a minute then. Thank you.
Time for another poem.
Exactly.
We used to have to memorize them in school, but can't reach back that far. Or score.
Mr. Powers, if, if you'd like, we could.
We'll, we'll, we'll get, we'll get started. And then Dr. Levin will pop in. So if we could move the next slide, please, and then we'll have Dr. Levin pop in when he's, he's ready to go. Thank you. So yes, here's our, gonna be our updates. Do you know them well by now? Let's go to the next slide, please. Thank you. Okay, just as an overview, so as of today, we can see over five hundred and twenty-two thousand vaccines have been administered in our county, first and second doses. So that means nearly forty-nine percent of our county's population, eligible population, has received at least one dose. So that's a lot of progress. And at the same time, it's not on this slide, but I do want to highlight the fact that testing is still happening at a very high rate. And, you know, I remember when, early on, we were trying to get to six or eight thousand a week. We're still doing over four thousand tests a day right now. And until we have our herd immunity level of vaccines, it's the one-two punch, I think, of good rate of administration of vaccine and a high testing rate. And that's attributed to our community being responsible getting tested. So, you know, and then, of course, now you see the third point, what does that lead to? Really good numbers on our case rate positivity and healthy place index, the three key metrics that the state and we are watching. Two are in orange, of course, we're in orange, one's in yellow and already, and we are heading on a path towards yellow. Knock wood, the trends are very positive. On the rental assistance, you'll see that, just a reminder to everybody, the deadline is today at six o'clock. To apply vcbusinessgrants.org. Rental assistance continues to be available. Applications are available. And then, as you know, we've touched on where we are with the, excuse me, one minute. Okay. Where we are with the, with the volume, the state numbers going down. Unfortunately, they thought they had, would have a big supply coming in the middle of this month. Looks like it's going to be towards the end of the month or the beginning of the next month. And then, of course, we see the governor's announcement of a full reopening of the economy on June fifteenth, subject to vaccine supply and keeping hospitalization rates low with guidelines, of course, prevention guidelines still in place. The American Rescue Plan, we're getting a lot of questions about this, of course, as you know. And we will be coming to your board on next meeting to talk about what programs are available and who is eligible. A long way to go on this, just to get the general information and then the guidance, which typically comes out a month or two later. And then with that, I see our public health officer has joined us, so I will turn it over to Dr. Levin. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Chair of the board, members of the board. I just wanted to update you about news that we, I think, have probably all heard this morning. We've seen six reported cases in the United States of a rare and severe type of blood clot in individuals after receiving the Johnson and Johnson or Yonson vaccine. One of these six individuals has died and one is hospitalized and in critical condition. The Center for Disease Control and the FDA have recommended stopping the use of the J and J vaccine while they review the data about these very unfortunate events. And hearing about this earlier this morning, we immediately stopped any plans on giving the J and J vaccine in our county. It may be a stoppage, it may be a pause. We will be waiting to see what the FDA and the CDC says as they look at this, and they're looking at it today. These complications are tragedies, they're human tragedies. So it's painful to look at such events in mathematical terms. Never, nevertheless, the situation begs that we do so. Six point eight million doses of Johnson and Johnson vaccine have been administered in the United States. Six clotting events is less than one in a million. The number of Johnson and Johnson doses that we have administered here in Ventura County is thirteen thousand six hundred and eighty-five. We've seen no reported cases of this in our county. And this is an unusual type of cerebral venous sinus thrombosis in that it was seen in combination with low levels of blood platelets, that kind of technical. But usually you see high levels of platelets that cause clotting. So it leans towards it being due to the vaccine, but again, CDC and the FDA are looking at it. It occurred in women between the ages of eighteen and forty-six years of age. And symptoms occurred six to thirteen days after the vaccination. Based on a significantly larger number of such cases that have occurred in Europe. There's been no correlation between this clotting event and either women or the use of birth control pills, in case you were wondering about that possibility. This possible complication, based on that European experience, appears to show no particular predilection for either age or sex. I said from the beginning that the use of any vaccine is a cost benefit ratio. It's not a monetary cost in this case, but a human life cost and a saving of human life benefit. We've seen no such cases in our county, but we've seen one thousand deaths in our county. We are and should have a hair trigger to pull a vaccine from use, and we're doing so in this case. People have asked along the way the very valid question, were these vaccines not rushed? We've probably all heard this. Let's go through that again. How were they made ready so quickly? The answer has always been, they have not depended on the same time-consuming, difficult technology that other vaccines require. Those soonest to appear on the scene can be made from chemicals on the shelf. Second, that mass production of these vaccines went into effect before the third and most time-consuming part of the approval process began and not after. Companies started manufacturing these vaccines at the beginning of the trials on tens of thousands of people and not after those trials were completed. But third, and most relevant here, the reasons these vaccines got an emergency use authorization and not an FDA approval is because there was an emergency. Normally, we wait two to three years following administration of a new drug or vaccine to see if there are side effects. But again, this was and is an emergency, and these vaccines have the potential to save thousands of lives and the stability of our society as we know it. People who have received the J and J vaccine who develop constant severe headache within two weeks. What's happening? Am I coming through mic or no? Okay.
Yes, I was clear.
Okay, sorry. People who have received the Johnson and Johnson vaccine, and some of you have, who develop constant and severe headache, abdominal pain, leg pain, or shortness of breath within three weeks after vaccination should contact their healthcare provider right away. What will the impact on the vaccine supply be? I'm going to leave that to Barry Zimmerman, who's going to talk about this in a bit. Almost fifty percent of those of us eligible in our county have received at least one dose of vaccine. This may be, it's too soon to tell, why we are not experiencing an increase in cases of COVID in our county that are being seen elsewhere in, in the nation and in the world. As we approach herd immunity levels in our county, we're at fifty percent, almost seventy to eighty percent will be our herd immunity level. We have that many of us vaccinated. This is not time to hold off getting those vaccines that we have. Now's the time also to stress, once again, the importance of mask wearing, social distancing, avoiding large gatherings and gathering outdoors, preferentially over gatherings that are indoors. And I want to stress how important it is to still get your vaccination. The mRNA vaccines that we have, and those are all that we're using in our county now, are still available and are safe and effective. And those are my comments.
Thank you, Dr. Levin. If I may just ask a follow-up question. So I understand there's no reports of serious adverse reactions in Ventura County from any of our vaccines, but just wanted to.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. I'll pause in case board members have any questions.
Levin, this is Supervisor Long. I just really appreciate addressing this today as the information is fresh. Fresh, and I believe we're getting more information from our California Public Health Department as well, correct? Please keep us updated. I know that everyone does a really great job of getting the information out with our PIO for the.
Supervisor Parks, Chair Parks, I would just say that I heard from a constituent today that the vaccine was to be administered, the Johnson and Johnson, Johnson vaccine was to be administered in Oxnard today and that there was a consequent pause on that. And it will be Moderna or Pfizer, is that correct?
It'll be Pfizer.
Pfizer, thank you very much. That's very reassuring that our, our county listens and responds accordingly. But thank you, Dr. Levin. That's really very important way to look at this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, and I'm also thankful that we have the doses that we can quickly switch over so people can continue getting their vaccinations. That, that's good news too. But it is very concerning and we will watch to see. And I appreciate you also telling us what the symptoms might be so people are on the lookout. One in a million. Fortunately, those are pretty good odds that you won't have anything happen, but it is important. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Levin and board members. And just to give you a sense of, you know, order of magnitude in our vaccination effort. It was really a sort of a smaller portion of our effort right now. As I understand it, really the only area that was using the Johnson and Johnson was our mobile teams. They were going and vaccinating homebound seniors, as well as a pop-up site in Fillmore. That site has been noticed that we're going to go ahead with it, but with Pfizer. So other than those two areas, we weren't using Johnson and Johnson much. And just overall, in terms of Ventura County, of the five hundred and twenty-two thousand vaccines administered, thirteen thousand six eighty-five were Johnson and Johnson. So again, just to order a magnitude there. And again, appreciate Dr. Levin and the team, as you said, the board members responding so quickly and sharing the information. And then, yes, Rego Vargas is going to be on a call with the state, I believe, at nine thirty. And we'll keep you and the community posted as information develops.
Yeah, I think also the Rose Avenue site had some Johnson and Johnson too. I can testify to that personally.
Yes, in the past, I was just talking about this week. Yes.
Okay, got it.
Yes, thank you Supervisor. And another point is, yes, so you should, you should write, you are aware of that. And, and also our very own public health director received the Johnson Johnson vaccine as well. So just for perspective. Thank you. Okay, with that, I will turn it over to our vaccine task force leader, Barry Zimmerman. Thank you.
Thank you, Mike. Next slide, please. We'll give you just kind of an overview of where we're at volume-wise and what we've accomplished thus far. So this is a monthly graph just showing. volume-wise and what we've accomplished thus far. So this is a monthly graph just showing the activity that is occurring on our vaccination efforts. As indicated, we've administered over a half a million doses of vaccines, both first dose and second dose, that you see the ratio there. I just wanted to highlight that we've issued at least first doses, is the way we count the percent completed there. This represents 48.7% of the total adult population. That'd be 16 and older have received at least one vaccine at this point and 30.6% have been fully vaccinated at this. We are, we do trend just slightly above the state average and well above national figures there. So we feel we've done a good job at advocating for vaccines and getting them distributed. Also wanted to make note that of those 65 and older, which was a priority of first on, was the senior population with those that were most senior, 75 and older was our group we really wanted to target. And then 65 was the second priority. As you see there, about 83% of all seniors have received at least one dose. That's 117,000 individuals receiving vaccines in that senior population, which is an excellent penetration rate for that segment of the population. Next slide, please. So let me just give you a status where we're at and some of the concerns that we're showing and some of the positive directions where we're headed. As you know, on April 15th eligibility, we will be for all adult populations, 16 and older. We do anticipate that there are demand of that population, the 16 to 49-year-olds. And so we will receive a higher volume and demand as we always have, as we've opened up to segments of the population. The dilemma that we have at this point in time is, and as Mike indicated, that the growth in total vaccines allocated to the county has been flat and we have not received the uptick that was anticipated in mid-April. We do hope and in discussions with the state that that's been delayed. And hopefully, as we get into the month of May, we will start seeing a significant increase in our vaccines where we could get all our locations up to maximum capacity. Right now, they do not run at maximum capacity. We limit our appointments based on the number of vaccines we receive. Some are frustrated that they can't schedule out far in advance, but we only receive a weekly allotment this time and have not received multi-week projections that we can rely on in order to open up vaccines. And we do not want to cancel individuals' appointments, so we open them up as we know we're going to have the vaccines available. To make note, as we open up to the 16-year-olds, the Pfizer vaccine is the only one that can, is authorized for those at the ages 16 and 17 years old. So individuals that desire to receive the vaccine that are 16 or 17, they must have parental consent to do so, but need to book their appointment relative to those sites that are offering Pfizer vaccines. Moderna and the Yanson vaccine are authorized for 18 and older. As indicated, we've been flat and we'll see a slight decrease until May in our vaccines throughout the county. There are systems and new efforts occurring that the federal government may have pharmacies and so forth, that they are also providing vaccines to. We have seen not a significant growth in those areas as well. Speaking to the Johnson and Johnson vaccine, prior to this week, we received about 6,800 doses is what we were receiving. And that allowed us to do not only mobile clinics, but community clinics such as Supervisor Parks mentioned at the Rose Avenue Clinic. This week, we received an 85% reduction in that vaccine to only 1,000 doses that we have to work with. So I would count this, that the decrease came at a fortunate time in which that when we pause, we do not have a lot of community clinics established based on that vaccine at this point in time. We do have a little bit of remaining Pfizer vaccine in our planning efforts as we do in order to adapt and adjust to the needs of the community. And so therefore, we're able to shift now those Pfizer vaccines to those pop-up clinics that we are doing and targeted ag clinics this week, which is fortunate for us to do. One of the areas that we've been working through is the Moderna second dose appointments. About three weeks ago, we had a shift, a significant shift in the ratio of vaccines between Moderna and Pfizer, which caused a ripple effect throughout our system. Just for round numbers and for illustration purposes, three weeks ago, we received about two-thirds of our allocation. We were Moderna and one-third Pfizer. So you can imagine as we were doing that volume of first dose of Moderna, then in a four-week cycle, we would have the same number that would be needing their second dose. However, three weeks ago, we received a flip in that ratio where now we're receiving two-thirds Pfizer and one-third Moderna. And it is somewhat out of our control to manage that. We just have to adjust accordingly. And thus, we had to slow down and eliminate all first dose appointments for Moderna and dedicate them all to second dose appointments over the last two weeks and this week coming. We believe that we've diverted that and we're working to get people scheduled for their second dose and feel we have adequate this week's second dose appointments to cover all those that are eligible for the timing associated with their second dose. In order to achieve that, we were able to work through our third-party administrator to secure an additional 2,500 Moderna, and that will be put into play for second dose next week. And we also, this past week, actually drove to Riverside who had extra Moderna and we were able to bring those up for our appointments here. So I just wanted to make you aware of that. Overall, our first dose rate of appointments are limited to the number of vaccines we receive. We've been at the current rate, allocation rate for some time. And so we have not been able to increase that, and so our numbers have been under capacity at this point in time. However, we are moving forward and anticipating a growth in vaccines as we planned and worked with the state and our third-party administrator. We are opening an additional large-volume vaccination site in South Oxnard at College Park. That will be a soft launch this weekend, but officially open the Monday, the 19th. It will be in a partnership relationship with contracted staff from OptumServe. And they will be running that site on our behalf as we oversee and work with them, which is a great resource for us. We use OptumServe as a relationship with the state with some of our testing sites that have been very positive in serving our community and expect the same type of customer service and service to the community as well. In addition, a similar arrangement will be established in the Seamy Valley site there at the Town Center Mall that we're setting up will be the following week after we establish the Oxnard site, which would be the first week of May in that regard. Next slide, please. I just wanted to highlight, one of our strategies has been using the flexibility of mobile teams. So Public Health has a team structure set up to do mobile activity. As you see, that they can do targeted pop-up community sites of which are listed here, as well as agricultural targeted sites in addition to some events that we've been coordinating with the ag community. You can see their volumes have significantly increased in the ag arena as well as the community pop-up sites. I did want to make note that they did nearly 500 long-term care facilities there. And that was in, some of that was due to the effort that the federal program did not reach all our long-term care facilities. And we had to augment and step in to do that. The team also receives calls and information into the public health about homebound seniors. And as you see, we've done over 400, you know, homebound seniors thus to date to actually vaccinate them in their location of residence. Next slide, please. As a reminder, we have shifted all our sites to the MyTurn system, and so it is through MyTurn in which individuals will schedule their appointments. They're able to schedule first dose and second dose appointments by going to myturn.ca.gov and be able to then see what available clinics and appointments are online and available to them. In addition, MyTurn does support a phone bank or a hotline in which individuals can call and receive help and book appointments via the telephone. So some of the characteristics there, the phone line there, it is multilingual. So individuals with language preferences will be able to call the number and be serviced through the state system as well. Next slide, please. This here is to make a record of where individuals can go and how they can access their vaccination record. We've received a number of calls from individuals that may have lost their card. And with increasing conversation around locations of businesses and other activities in our community that may require evidence of a vaccine, that they've received a vaccination, that receiving this record will be important if you have lost it. Currently, right now, it is the State Immunization Registry that maintains the official records of an individual who's been vaccinated. You are able to go to their website at, as indicated here, and there is a section to click in order to look for your record. There is some, you do have to upload some evidence of your identification. And if that is a difficulty there, there is an 800 number that individuals can call and receive assistance in securing an official notification or identification of their record. Public Health is also looking on how best we potentially may be able to set up a resource locally in order to help individuals here on a local basis there. And so we are working with the state to inquire on how best to do that. Next slide, please. As indicated, testing is an important aspect of the continued efforts to identify and to also provide the security for individuals who may need to be tested or have been exposed or have symptoms of COVID to find out whether they have it or not. These are our current testing locations. We have transitioned a few of our drive-through sites and walk-in sites over to a kiosk environment that's managed by a vendor. There, you can go to our website. Pre-registration is the most helpful on all these locations to help individuals quickly go through the testing location and receive their results electronically. So that would be at our website at VenturaCountyRecovers.org. And under the testing section there, these new locations will be identified as well as the links to register in advance to speed up the process to get your testing done. So that concludes my remarks for the updates at this point in time. And I believe Mr. Vargas is next to go over our status. Oh, there's Mike.
Yeah, hi, thanks Barry. Pause for a second to see if we have any questions. All right, okay. Take it away, Mr. Vargas. Thanks Barry.
Thank you, Mr. Powers. Good morning, Chair Parks, members of the board. Yes, and thank you for putting that slide up. So yeah, a few comments here mainly related to our metrics. So, you know, everyone is aware of the great news that we moved into the current tier quite nicely. We did it even without the adjustment to the original metrics that were in place even before we reached the 4 million mark. So that was also a great testament that Ventura County were remaining strong, vigilant, diligent in adhering to the continued public health guidelines to continue to improve our situation. And so, you know, now that we're in the orange tier, our next goal is of course the final frontier, if you will, the fourth tier, the yellow tier. And hopefully, we can get that into that level in the next two weeks. As you know, we can move between tiers at a minimum. We need to stay in the current tier for three weeks. So that leaves us two weeks, and we're actually on the path towards doing that. So first, on the left-hand side top, you can see the seven-day average case rate per 100,000 resident. That number at 2.8 is an improvement from 3.9 last week. That is the adjusted case rate. And as Mr. Powers mentioned, you know, thank you Ventura County for testing that continued good volume. We're still testing higher than the state median, and that allows for a very favorable adjustment to our case rate. And so 2.8, a really nice improvement from 3.9. It's hard to see there, but hopefully everyone's familiar with the tier metrics and is familiar with the different levels. But, you know, with the reaching the 4 million vaccinations statewide, the tiers, levels did change. And so now our goal is to reach less than two. So 1.9 would put us at yellow in two weeks. We're at 2.8. Again, we improved it from 3.9. So it is possible, definitely in two weeks to get there, but we still need to do what we know is needed to bring these numbers further down. So, you know, if we hadn't reached as a state the 4 million threshold, that goal would have been at one case rate. Now it's at two. So again, even more so within our reach. So that is the case rate adjusted. So the middle one there is a seven-day testing positivity rate. Good news there too. We improved from 1.6 to 1.3. And we are already meeting the level, the threshold for going into yellow, as you can see there. We're, it needs to be less than two. We're at 1.3 already in yellow. The third metric that the state is using, as we all know, in terms of moving between tiers, is the testing positivity rate in our most impacted communities, we call the Health Equity, HPI. Testing positivity, we're at 2.6. That improved modestly from 2.8. But we are very close to the 2.2 that is the threshold for that metric meeting the yellow threshold. So 2.6, we need to be at 2.2, or less actually, less than 2.2, so 2.1. But we're right around the corner there. So that's why I'm very optimistic that with the continued, you know, attention to the public health guidelines of Dr. Levin reminded us, washing our hands diligently, wearing a mask still when we're outdoors and in contact with others, and limiting gatherings. And when you do gather, do it safely and outdoors. So with those indications and precautions, I think we're going to continue to go in the right direction there and move into the yellow tier. And that's of course important so that additional sectors can open up, increase capacity, more activities allowed. And that gets us all more ready for our governor's goal of having really, on June 15th, if all goes well, that on June 15th, we will no longer be in any of the tiers. But, you know, that's a little bit far off a couple months. And so in the meantime, we do want to reach the yellow. So thank you Ventura County for improving our numbers. Next, please. Today, I don't have the updated numbers. Our state data platform is not updating. So we don't have today's numbers. These were yesterday's numbers. And I would just, you know, draw your attention to the fact, a reminder, I don't think anyone needs it, but I'll mention it, that of course, we're not over this pandemic. 115 individuals were detected to have, you know, the virus that causes COVID, COVID, the illness. And so it is, it's still in the community. It is still being transmitted. And it could still have some serious consequences. Enough that 27 residents in Ventura County yesterday were still in the hospital. And five of those were in the ICU. So while, you know, these numbers are smaller, nevertheless, those families are, you know, in a serious health condition there for their family member. And so five in the ICU, 27 in the hospital yesterday, today's numbers. And so five in the ICU, twenty-seven in the hospital yesterday, today's numbers again also are not in yet. Uh, good news is that uh yesterday we did not report any deaths. It's very refreshing that finally we're seeing uh that uh, you know, we're getting to this uh goal there of uh zero deaths. Uh, today, uh, the team did give me a heads up that we will not be reporting any uh additional deaths. So that's uh two days plus the we, uh, the weekend um that uh, you know, we don't report any deaths. And let's uh, let's hope that we keep those numbers down. For that, we need to, of course, uh, continue to do what we need to do uh to bring these numbers down. Um, and uh, that's uh, if we can go to the next slide, please. My next slides uh are just uh, I think it's been uh three or four weeks since I last showed the flattening of our curves for all three uh curves, again, the uh, the case rate. Uh, this one also uh has a testing rate on uh the yellow line on the right-hand side uh column. And you can see that uh testing, while it's uh lowered uh since the uh, the pandemic height, uh, the surge. Nevertheless, we're at a, at a good place, we're almost at uh four hundred and seventy uh is our testing volume. Uh, that is a uh, it's remained for a few weeks at that level. It is higher, as I mentioned, than the state median, so that has given us a continued favorable adjustment to our case rate. So please Ventura County uh for both the protection of yourself and others around you, uh, get tested when you feel you uh, you were exposed or or there's a chance that you may have uh the virus, get tested. And then, of course, uh athletes and uh essential frontline staff, everyone is encouraged to still um partake of our excellent capacity uh for, for testing. Yes, there's some changes occurring to some of the ways we offer the test, but nevertheless, uh, it is still being offered widely in Ventura County. And so uh, please to, to uh continue to, to get tested. The, the, the other bottom lines in uh, in purple and in blue, uh, you can see really the extent of the flattening of the curve now continuously for the last few weeks. Uh, very much uh appreciate the, this flattening of, of this curve. And that, next slide, please. Similarly, for hospitalizations, uh, you can see the uptick in early November. And and now our uh, this curve has been planned for a while now. Uh, you know, we've been in the, the tw- high twenties, middle twenties um at best. Uh, for a while we were in the low thirties. We hope to, of course, eventually get to zero uh folks uh that are, have uh serious uh side effects or or um symptoms associated with COVID that they went into our hospitals to get excellent care. But uh, nevertheless, we uh, we've flattened this curve too, and it's a continued trend, and we need to keep it that way. Uh, next, please. The deaths, as I mentioned, that curve has also been flattened. And as I had mentioned the last time I showed this slide, I was still a little concerned that we were still on a daily basis reporting uh deaths, even if they were uh at a smaller uh number. But uh, the last few days have been zero deaths. And uh, nevertheless, for all those nine hundred and ninety families that have lost a loved one or lots of prayers, um, sympathy goes out to them. But it is good and refreshing to see that we're no longer reporting on a daily basis uh the new deaths. Uh, next, please. Okay, so just in conclusion, I'd like to just uh offer a little bit of uh information on uh, on what's coming up on uh, on April fifteenth and a couple days in terms of uh, now that we're in the orange uh tier, and uh also some uh, some new uh guidance that uh pertains to, to gatherings that is, is being allowed by the state and the governor. So um, you know, outdoor gatherings now expanded to uh fifty uh people um with social distance, uh mask wearing, and you know, hopefully also still sanitizing items and, and uh, and so on, using, using good uh preventive measures. But it is good to see that on uh, on April fifteenth, again, outdoor uh gatherings uh can expand to fifty um, fifty people. So uh, private events are also uh um in meetings, uh taking some uh, some changes here on the fifteenth. And so uh, you know, for receptions or conferences, uh, it is still more recommended, as been said, uh, as much as the gatherings or events that can happen outdoors, the better. Um, so outdoor events are, are limited to a hundred people, but nevertheless, it's uh, it's good to see that now uh these type of uh, of gatherings are, are allowed. Um, so uh, hundred uh for receptions and or conferences if they're held outdoor. Um, and the outdoor event capacity can increase to three hundred if all guests are tested and show uh proof of, of full vaccination. And that's up to, you know, the event organizer to, to assure of that, uh, you know, get, get proof and so on. But um, that is uh three hundred if all guests are tested and show proof of uh vaccination. Uh, you know, there's also allowances for indoor activities. Uh, and so if all guests are tested and show full proof of vaccination, indoor gatherings uh can happen, meetings, conferences, up to a hundred and fifty people. And so that's also good news, uh, but uh, again, we do strongly recommend that uh the organizers uh uh, a test or just to make sure that the guests are tested, have received the recent test and or show proof of uh vaccinations. Um, and then uh, you know, just a reminder that uh, you know, the state is requiring pre uh, uh, pre-purchase tickets uh to, to uh some of these larger events, uh, you know, such as sporting events, um, that uh you pre-purchase uh tickets to make sure of uh sign seating. Uh, lastly, in terms of uh some updates of indoor live events and performances, uh, you know, for uh venue sites that have uh up to fifteen hundred person capacity, uh, the capacity is limited to fifteen percent or two hundred people. Um, so you know, uh, you know, modest, but nevertheless, uh, you know, uh, these indoor live events and performances you can operate up to fifteen percent or two hundred people. And uh, it can increase to thirty-five percent if uh, again, with the similar guidance as I've uh mentioned before, uh, there's a testing and full proof of uh vaccination. And uh, lastly, for venue capacity of over fifteen hundred and, and above, uh, capacity is limited to ten percent or uh two thousand. So you know, uh, you know, quite a nice uh number there. But uh, again, uh, for testing and showing proof of vaccination. So as we continue to increase our vaccination efforts, I think these uh, uh guidelines will be more feasible to, to have this many people show proof that they've been vaccinated. So just uh, again, uh, sharing that uh good news of uh us being in orange tier. And as we move towards uh, uh, yellow tier, uh, we'll be able to even have uh more of these allowances. So thank you Ventura County again for all the good work.
Thank you, Rigo. And I'll pause there, see if there's any questions.
I, I did want to just point out the hundred and fifteen cases, that was for the um, three-day total of the weekend, is that correct?
That's right, uh, Chair Parks, it is uh yesterday's number, that includes uh Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, three days, yes.
Okay, so we're still keeping it in two digits and I gotta get that down still, but that, that's better than the way it was, that's for sure. Supervisor Long, did you have a question?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, Mr. Vargas, one to ask, we got a question in regards to a combination of indoor and outdoor events. So if they're allowed to do part of it indoors and part of it outdoors, keeping it, can you then um have it at four hundred and fifty people?
You know, that's a really good question, I hadn't uh thought about or heard that. And so it, it, you know, it follows that it would, reasonable that it would be allowed. But if I can get back to you and, and can show the information uh, with our PIO uh to share with the community, if in fact we can confirm that that, that can be a combined uh number.
Thank you very much.
Hey, very good. Thank you, Rigo. Next up, uh, we'll hear from Rosa Gonzalez on our health equity efforts. We know it's a top priority for your board, and we'll hear your report on where we're at there.
Good morning, Board of Supervisors, uh Chair Parks and CEO Powers, Rosa Gonzalez, uh, Community Liaison with the CEO Office. This morning, we're excited to share some of the updates on our equity efforts that we have been conducting countywide. Um, we were able to confirm that to date, the county of Ventura has vaccinated nineteen thousand six hundred and two farmworkers. Uh, we were able to confirm too, that we are seeing a good number of farmworkers attend our high-capacity mass vaccination sites. Um, you, that we have throughout the county. And also in addition to that, working with our mobile team and our eleven uh county clinics, um, I think that's been a huge contributor to making vaccines accessible to our farmworking uh populations. Um, I think also what has been really helpful is our partnership and collaboration with our community partners and also our own county departments and agencies in helping our most vulnerable populations um register and get Elsa access in addition to the site locations, but to register to get vaccines. Um, I know our Farmworker Resource Program, MyCOPCAZ, um, Lideres Campesinas, and a variety of other uh community um, members have been assisting individuals that have been contacting them. And uh, we keep working with them together uh and sharing information to make the registration process easier, but also the education um component of vaccines and continuing to uh practice, you know, the safe distancing and uh prevention of COVID. Another thing we have is our um, i- i- is the community events that our vaccine uh clinics, mobile vaccine clinics have been holding. Uh, we have almost five thousand registered individ- uh vaccinated individuals countywide. There's been uh, a few vaccine clinics in the Piru area, we also have in Santa Paula. Um, the ones we had at the John Flynn Center in Rio, and also in the uh South Oxnard area. And again, this is a great partnership with, with county and working with a variety of community members in each one of these communities. Um, and also making it comfortable for our community members to come and participate and access the vaccines. Um, Public Health continues their partnership with a variety of community um organizations and their promotora um partnership in providing the outreach and education, and again, also helping with the uh vaccine registration and access. To date, they have connected with over forty-two thousand individuals in our community. And that just, you know, shows when you see the pictures of them at laundromats, at uh grocery stores and other um areas where community is just, you know, connecting their day-to-day business, but taking on that opportunity to provide this information in a welcoming um, you know, uh, manner, it really makes someone of, you know, feel a lot more comfortable about asking questions that they otherwise would have been hesitant. So this partnership has been really beneficial in getting this information out um for, for communities that otherwise possibly might have had a hard time accessing, accessing some of this information. And with that, the county is also partnering with the Ventura County Community Foundation uh to bring back their complete count vaccine, I'm sorry, complete count uh cap group uh to help us with vaccine outreach also. So we're also working together with Plan VCOE, the city of Oxnard, on ways to also specifically target areas in um South Oxnard and of other Oxnard neighborhoods, but also we'll look at ways to do the same um within the Santa Clara Valley. Uh, we just find it very important to, for these partnerships and uh to really maximize everyone's networking and connections to make sure that we have these successful vaccine events. Um, also today on your agenda, item twenty-seven, you also have the Housing for the Harvest item that our Human Services Agency is bringing forth for your, for your consideration. That's gonna be another great addition to the efforts the county has been since about late April twenty twenty, already providing medical quarantine and isolation for our farmworking community and, and other residents in the county. But this uh Housing for the Harvest just is really specifically tailored for our farming community too, and it's gonna just be an, an, a great addition um of working along with the UFW Foundation and uh providing this support for our farmworking community. And um, as I mentioned, uh, we have various meetings and partnerships that the county has been uh working with, with a number of our CBOs, organizations, and community members countywide, with Santa Clara Valley or Oxnard area, and also in East County. And uh, we continue to hold those and really share information, but also listen to the needs of the community and the best ways that we could really make plans on how to serve our community members best. And um, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
All right, thank you, Rosa. Sixty-two pop-up events since February eleventh. Uh, so.
Just great work. Supervisor Long, did you want to ask a question?
Yes, uh, Rosa Gonzalez, I just wanted to please let everyone know, thank you so much. It's a huge effort to have these mobile units going out and uh the community of Santa Paula, Fillmore, Piru. Um, we have seen a lot of great successes, especially with our homebound seniors, and wanted just to say thank you. I know that the Public Health uh National Week Celebration is coming, is this week, but I just wanted to really appreciate it, how the health equity for our county is just extremely important. And so doing these pop-ups, I think, shows our community how important it really is. So I wanted to just say thank you.
I know we don't know how long the pause will be for the Johnson and Johnson, but that has to have a major impact on these pop-ups, right? Because now we have to make sure they come back and we get the second shot and all that. So I, I hope that doesn't affect our um, our numbers on diversity.
Barry, you have a thought?
Y- yes, uh, you, you are right, we, we've already been in this anticipation of just the shift this morning to uh schedule the second uh timing of these in the same locations. So individuals don't have to seek, uh, you know, new, new clinics in order to get the vaccines, at least trying to make that as simple as possible.
It's another complication, we, we know, and then you know that Pfizer has a different uh period of time from um Moderna, and it's, it's just that, I think people don't realize how incredibly complex this is in, in getting these vaccine, ex- vaccinations out. So thank you for the good work.
Thank you, Chair Parks.
Chair.
Supervisor Ramirez.
Uh, thank you, and thank you for the excellent work, uh, Rosa and, and everyone. Um, I uh continue to be concerned about, maybe this isn't the right moment to say it, but uh people totally letting their guard down because we see what's happening elsewhere. I think it's very important to keep the message that we're not out of the woods yet. We still have uh very contagious, uh, potentially contagious variants in our county um and throughout California. And um, I've seen, I see what's happening in other states, some of the other states, particularly Michigan. And I know people are so anxious to get back to what we might remember as normal and really long for. But just uh, I was speaking to um a doctor that I know over the weekend uh about resistance to getting the vaccine, and I'd like to see if there's any um experiences that we, our, our folks are having with, in general, maybe Rosa, you could speak about if there's, we're seeing any organized or strong resistance to getting vaccinated. Um, I think it's out there, I, I just can't tell how predominant it is. I hope it's not.
Sure. No, we have encountered from the beginning some hesitation, concerns about just vaccines in general uh with our populations that we're really trying to uh provide access to. Uh, especially some, you know, that they're concerned about, from their religious beliefs about the origins of some of these vaccines. Um, and so what we have done is just really try to provide them, and which is key with a lot of our efforts, has been the educational component of providing information for them to take into consideration um and make that decision that they best feel comfortable with. Uh, so we provide that information to them upfront. Uh, and we have encountered at some of these, um, like some of the farmworking uh clinics that we've held, but also on community members where they see it's a vaccine, a specific vaccine that maybe they don't want to have, that maybe prefer another, or decide they just don't want to be vaccinated, period. Because uh, similar to Dr. Levin's comments earlier, there's still that hesitation from some about how fast the vaccines were created. Again, uh, the religious part too, you know, and their, their beliefs is also coming into play. Uh, so we are seeing some hesitation, uh, but we still are making it available, uh, the education, the information, and the accessibility, and also for those that decide to not maybe be vaccinated at that moment, we do offer alternatives and information to, available to them. So if later on they decide they do want to, you know, get vaccinated, then they know who to connect with. Um, you know, that we will hold future events close by and, and with our outreach, and again, using our community partners, that's gonna be really key to making sure to continue these efforts, because these vaccines are gonna last for months to come. And uh, the county's gonna continue with their efforts in making the vaccines available. Uh, so we'll just, w- w- we're always there, um, if you go to any of the vaccine uh clinics um and sites, county staff is always happy to engage and answer questions. I think that's what's really key, is making um ourselves available to answering their questions and addressing their concerns. But there is a lot of comments, rumors, um, you know, going on. And I think that's where it's really great, that we're tailoring a lot of our outreach to address these populations, especially when we do culturally competent outreach, right? We're really making sure that it's tailored for the audience that we're trying to really address. Um, and so, so that's really key, and it's gonna be uh far more receptive from them to, to listen to what we're saying and feel that it's uh, that they, that they, that they trust the information that they're receiving.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Supervisor Ramirez and Rosa, and you, Rosa, what you touched on, I think- And Rosa, we touched on, I think it's so important, trusted messengers. And our public health staff pre-pandemic have really built trust in the community. They really have that. And I think having that is a real asset right now. Because as you say, they're at these pop-up sites, it doesn't show up in the numbers, but they're talking to folks very, on a very personal level. I think that really helps ease concerns. And then Supervisor Ramirez, you had mentioned yesterday when we spoke that the concept of, of primary care physicians as trusted messengers as well. And that's something that we spoke about yesterday with our steering committee and Dr. Levin will, you know, both our own county physicians, but also private physicians. And so we'll reach out to Mary Carr at the Medical Association. Okay. Thank you, Rosa. So next up, we'll, we'll turn to the economic impacts of the pandemic on our community and your report on our rental assistance program from Livingston.
Good morning, Chair Parks, members of the board, Mr. Powers for the record, Melissa Livingston, Director of the Human Service Agency. So we're about 30 days into applications for the state-administered emergency rental assistance program. Statewide, there's been over 83,000 applications for the program. And from Ventura County, not quite 2,000 applications have come in. Those applicants that have applied are applying for a dollar value of eligibility currently of $18 million. So that's pretty much one-third of the 50 million that was allocated for Ventura County, inclusive of the city of Oxnard. When we look at, it's hard to know just how many months of arrearsages that tenants have incurred. But in looking at these numbers, we can estimate that there's probably an average of four to six months that our tenants are experiencing in arrearsages. Of the 18 million, 1 million of that's already been approved and payments will be going out shortly. So as just a reminder, the program eligibility runs from April 1st of 2020 through March 30th of 2021 with the potential of three additional months of prospective rent. Tenants can apply and receive 20% of unpaid rent and landlords can apply and be reimbursed up to 80%. We have a very robust provider network that's doing outreach, education and technical assistance. We have 11 entities. There is a definite focus on our health equity regions in recognizing the disadvantaged communities in those regions. I'd like to call out those providers that are providing support. California Rural Assistance League, Legal City Serve Network, Housing Rights Center, Interface 211, My Cop, Westminster Free Clinic, Ventura County, Ventura Community Development Corporation, El Concilio, United Way and Southern California Association of Nonprofit Housing. Again, a reminder that the, the eviction protections run through June 30th of this calendar year. We do also have posted on the state website that can be accessed at housingiski.com. Tenant resources, so if tenants are running into issues with landlords, they may contact the California Rural Legal Assistance, Housing Rights Center, the Oxnard Housing Department or the Ventura County District Attorney. And the call center is available, toll-free number, 800-833-4302122. That's available seven days a week from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. And I'm happy to answer any questions.
A question. I have a quick question, Chair Parks.
Please go ahead.
I'm, I'm looking at the website right now and it's just really not clear what the deadline is to apply for this.
Good question Supervisor Ramirez. The state has not identified a deadline. They basically said as long as there's funding that remains in, in the till, the program will continue to be open. The, the, the funding is only, is only available through December 30th of this calendar year. So we recognize that they plan on ramping down on outreach in the November timeframe. And we'll probably see by the November timeframe if those funds have not been spent down, probably at that point in time, a timeline for final applications.
And you said only 2,000 Ventura County residents have applied?
Thus far, thus far only 2,000 applications.
Well, in my experience, that's very low. We need, we all need to, you know, promote this. I think, I know there's more than 2,000 people in trouble with back rent. So I'll do, try to do my part too.
Yeah, I appreciate that. And, and I would say the same thing from a statewide perspective. 83,000 applications for the entire state of California. I would, I would have expected that to be a larger number also, so.
Melissa, how many did we have the first go-around, first rental assistance?
We had just about 1,600, not quite 1,700. And we, we paid for three months of arrearsages on, on those.
Could some of those people also apply for this?
They could apply. We provided a list of all of those individuals because they couldn't receive payment, federal payment out of two different sources. And so of the file identified how much they were paid for what period, and that was taken in consideration if anyone filed another application for the state program.
Great. Thank you. Okay. Next we'll hear about our business support efforts from Paul Stamper.
Good morning, Chair Parks, Board, CEO Powers, Paul Stamper with the County Executive Office. Happy to give you an update on our Business Assistance Grant Program. We, today is our last day accepting applications at 6:00 PM today. So we're certainly encouraging everyone to take advantage of the time that's left. Go to vcbusinessgrants.org to apply. So we've had one week of pre-registration and then we extended our application period so that this will be the close of two weeks for that application period to happen. If I could have the next slide, please? Thank you. So there's been a tremendous amount of outreach associated with this program. First of all, we, we held a, a meeting with our community partners, invited over 170 partners. And together with them, they have utilized websites, emails, social media newsletters. Some other examples, City of Fillmore, for example, is canvassing all of their businesses. Our Westside Community Development Organization in Ventura held an open house where we invited businesses in to support them in their application process. And then of course, through our PIO's office here at the county, we've been leveraging social media heavily. You can see over 183,000 people reached through that and utilizing our lists of businesses that have registered with us, sending out e-blasts, updating them, as well as using all the local newspapers with print ads, hosting webinars in English and Spanish and participating in community meetings to answer questions. You can see in the background on this slide, this is a picture of Jorge Escobar. He's the manager at the Somas Cafe Restaurant. So this was a promotional video that was created in English and Spanish used in this marketing campaign. This restaurant was an example of one that received a $5,000 grant in our last, in our first grant program. The restaurant's been there since 1974. So it represents not only a thriving local business, but one with a history that we want to support and maintain them. If I could have the next slide, please? So up to this point, over 2,000 applications has been received, similar to the rental assistance number of applications, which together with our previous grant program puts us around 6,000 businesses. Now again, these are just submitted applications. So we are going through the review process now, reviewing those. And in that process, outreach to those businesses to make sure that they are able to update or add any missing information or documents that are needed with the, the timeline of payments going out by the end of April and then again in May. I will add that we recognize that the 2,000 applications we've received so far means that of the $20 million that your board allocated for this program, were we to, to hand out $5,000 grants to approximately 2,000 businesses, that would come to around $10 million. So we understand there's some additional funding there and are planning to come back to your board next week on Tuesday with some options for your consideration related to that funding to continue supporting our local businesses. The consensus with our community partners is that many of our local businesses right now are focused on the reopening, which is actually good news and the benefits they'll receive from getting their supplies and employees and everything in place to, to fully take advantage of the ability that they have to open. We, we've also, and the system that we have for our grant program this time allows us to see that there's been a little over 500 applications that are still in draft mode and not submitted yet. And so we, we have done a tremendous outreach with emails and phone calls, so directly touching all of those folks, encouraging them to submit their applications. And, you know, what we found in that process is the vast majority of those, the system's working as designed because what happens is when, when you go to fill out a grant application, the very first section you'll look through is the eligibility criteria. And as people are going through that process, they're realizing, oh, I already received a grant last time. I don't need to fill out the application this time, et cetera. And so those folks are, are self-selecting out when they realize they do not meet the eligibility requirements for this program. If I could have the next slide, please? I wanted to take a minute to recognize that a program like this takes a lot of contributions. So we, we have a team of disaster service workers here at the county representing agencies such as Auditor, CEO, Child Support Harbor, HSA Probation. These are all folks that are coming in to support the outreach and the review process associated with this program. They're making direct phone calls to these businesses, helping explain how it works and helping them to move into compliance if they're missing something on their application. In addition to that, there are other agencies that are naturally involved supporting this program through contracts. The, the payment process, which the Auditor's office has taken on a, a, a big workload for us to help make sure these checks get out and are processed correctly. IT services has done all sorts of support for us. And of course, we're working with our contractors, Ernst &amp; Young and EDCBC here locally to support the program as well. If I could have the next slide, please? And I'll, I'll be happy to take questions on the, the program. I just wanted to touch on a few other assistance programs out there right now. So the shuttered venue operators grant, this is happening. They're accepting applications now through the SBA. And this is for those venues that were shut down during the COVID. And April 8th, applications started coming in. So we encourage folks to take advantage of that. The restaurant revitalization grant is also going to be processed through SBA. That is not open for applications yet, but it's anticipated anytime this month. And so we'll be watching that closely and they're promoting it to all of our local restaurants to take advantage of once that comes online. And then lastly, the California Relief Grants, there is one more round of applications coming up, which will begin April 28th and run through May 4th. And of course, those businesses that have already applied through the California Relief Grants, they do not have to reapply. That application will be considered for that last round as well. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
It's great to see the Small Business Administration stepping up too. And, and those are grants, not loans, right?
That's correct. Yes.
Really good to see. Do any board members have questions?
Paul, this is Supervisor Long. Thank you for this update. I was very concerned in regards to how many were in the waiting to get the application in, but not done. So thank you for that clarification that they've already received the, the grant. So that's important for our community to know. I know people have reached out to me just in frustration about the grant process in general from the federals and state and how many, you know, hoops they have to jump over. So really appreciate how quickly our county was to move to the orange and really get businesses to open. And I know they're all looking forward to June 15th where they can be completely opened and appreciate our business ambassadors really working with our businesses. So just, there's a lot of moving parts here and it, the heart and soul of our county is our businesses. And just want to appreciate that. So thank you.
And this, these grants that our, our board is approving, they are also prioritized for minority-owned businesses and women-owned businesses, veterans. Is that correct?
That's correct Supervisor Parks. So you can be eligible without meeting one of those, but those were the priority factors identified. And certainly a lot of outreach has happened in that regard. We will have robust reporting associated with this program. So we'll be able to show you as we close out and determine who's eligible, how the, those numbers broke out. But we are seeing a high number of those applicants that meet those priority factors you just described.
That's great. And then also we did raise, it was, I think the first round was maybe one and a half million businesses that are making one and a half million or, or less. And now it's, that has been raised, is it two and a half now? Is that correct?
Right Supervisor, we did change the number. So the first round was 2 million was the maximum gross annual revenue. We're at two and a half million this time. And we also expanded the program by allowing other types of nonprofits, our C6s and C19s as well.
And today is that deadline, correct?
That's right. 6:00 PM today. It's not too late. Please go to vcbusinessgrants.org. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for the presentation.
Welcome.
Thank you, Chair Parks and Paul. And just so you have a sort of total order of magnitude, the first round of grants went to just under 4,000 small businesses. So you add this close to 2,000, so you get a sense of comment. How many have qualified for both, through both rounds? And then, you know, as we'll go back and look at available funding that could be redistributed with again your, your board's support. So very good. Thank you, Paul. And just one more slide. There we go. As you know, our, our plan of action, as we're going there, I did want to say, you know, Paul acknowledged the, the DSW disaster service workers working on this program. I did want to just highlight too, again, all of the efforts that are happening throughout the county, including especially the vaccine effort. There's over 370 county employees who have been reassigned to do this work. And for example, at the Fairgrounds Vaccine Site, there's 16 different departments represented with their employees there. So they're working more than full-time. They're public servants, that's what they do. They're very passionate about it. And I also appreciate the departments who have lent them out, so to speak, because their work still has to get done. And so the employees back at the office are, are doing their work for them. So, but it's a great team effort. It's pretty unique. I don't know of too many counties that have this many employees reassigned, but hopefully it's, it's making a difference out there. Appreciate that all hands on deck approach. So if we could have the final slide and thank you. And you know, our, it's our plan of action, vaccine deployment, testing, business and rental support, and continuing to follow the guidance. So that's our presentation for today and happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Any further questions? I know that we also have one public comment to be read into the record and I think Ms. Martinez will do that.
This is Supervisor Long. Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to say thank you to Mr. Powers and still continuing to work with our kitchen cabinet for a sea sack and working with Dr. Golly and Anna Santos and all. You do not hear the regular calls that are going on, on a weekly, daily basis, texts and so forth. I know that Ms. Mr. Vargas just left for another call. So many of our department heads are really working for our county and I want to make sure that our constituents know that. We do have our board meetings on, but there's more going on than just what you're seeing today. So I really appreciate it and the fast action in regards to the J&amp;J. City of Fillmore is already getting out that information quickly for our sites for vaccination. So I just wanted, thank you. There's so many moving parts to this and appreciate everyone's hard work.
Thank you. It's a pleasure. I want to appreciate our city partners as well. We meet regularly with them. Troy Brown's the chair of the group this year from Moore Park, all 10 cities in our county and BCTC and the Port Natal Base. We meet a couple of times a week to coordinate, share messaging and, and support one another.
And our schools too.
Schools, oh my goodness. Incredible partnership with the schools, getting all the teachers vaccinated in the month of March. But they're just wonderful partners. Yeah. Thank you.
Okay, with that, let's go ahead and hear our, our public comment. And then as I, on this agenda item, number eight. And then as I understand it, we'll go directly to Agenda Item 27. So we have one speaker on Item 8. Ms. Martinez, would you like to read it?
Yes, good morning Chair Parks, Board Members and CEO Powers. This email comes from Judy Bruce and it says, COVID-19, a cover story. COVID-19 is nothing but a cover story to control society, the virus. They injected into society was a campaign of fear, the smoking gun of a cover story is meaningless PCR task. The PCR task masks any future vaccine passes are nothing more than a stage props and a display of mindless obedience. To prove that COVID-19 is just a cover story for world domination, Dr. Heiko Schunin gave a press conference where he represented 500 German doctors and 600 Spanish doctors. And there's a quote, "We as medical doctors have serious doubts that the official story of COVID-19 is true. In fact, we have a lot of evidence that is a fake story all over the world. To all my medical colleagues, we see evidence that is obvious that this is a scam and it is not true. One must ask why and who gets the profit and who has the power to create this monumental fake." End of quote. Anyone with two working brain cells know the mask is just a training exercise in obedience which prepared the sheeple for the lethal injection whose purpose is control humanity and to depopulate. Why not a word from you Levins Public Health Department that so-called vaccine is experimental and injects synthetic pathogen is going to kill many people with poor immune systems? The, the face diapers destroys the immune system with incubating bacterial pneumonia into the lungs. And why not a word that is nanotechnology insulation hydrogenal will link? And then that's the 250-word limit for this email. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, please Supervisor Ramirez.
I feel compelled to make a very brief comment about that public comment. And while everyone is entitled to their opinion that being a person who has seen it firsthand, what the virus does to a human being, I'm almost speechless because that is just wrong. Nobody is being required to get the vaccine. If you don't want it, don't get it, but please don't endanger the rest of our community and your own loved ones. Thank you.
Thank you for that. And now let us go to Item 27. And this is an item which I will turn over to Melissa Livingston. And after that, I know we have a speaker on this item also.
Thank you. Good morning again Chair Parks, Board Members, Mr. Powers. For the record, Livingston, Director of the Human Service Agency. The item before your board today requests authorization for the Human Service Agency to sponsor and oversee the Housing for the Harvest Program in Ventura County, accepting $1.351 million in state funds from the California Department of Social Services to contract with the UFW Foundation as the local administrator to provide wraparound services in accord with the Housing for the Harvest Program expansion design. Just briefly for background, in July of 2020, the Governor Newsom announced the launch of the Housing for the Harvest Program. At the time, it was focusing on providing temporary hotel housing for essential agricultural farm and food processing workers who had been exposed to COVID or who had tested positive, providing for an opportunity to isolate or quarantine for a 14-day period. Early on, Ventura County opted to to leverage a the hotel environment that we had created through our FEMA agreements. And so led by Public Health, the Office of Emergency Services and supported by our Farm Worker Resource Program, we were very successful in housing a number of individuals and families who chose to isolate or quarantine, including a subset, but a smaller subset of farmworkers. What the state learned through the administration of this program is that farmworkers specifically and food processing workers did not, they preferred isolation and quarantine in in home environments versus hotel motel environments. And so the state saw a low participation rate. And the state has shared data that that reflects that approximately 90% of agricultural farm and food processing workers would prefer to isolate or quarantine in home environments versus motel environments. So the expansion of this program has recognized that they need to provide another option for that isolation and quarantine. So the state approved in February, late February of this year, Assembly Bill 85 that expanded the Home for Harvest Program with that option for isolation and quarantining in a home environment. And to also incentivize participation in the program and to offset any losses from wages or COVID-related expenses, the state also offered a direct assistance, one-time direct assistance payment to an individual that was eligible for the program of either $1,000 if they isolated or quarantined in a hotel environment or $500 if they chose to isolate or quarantine in a home environment. As the Housing for Harvest models have reflected across the state, reflected, it has reflected that the importance of embedding your local administrator that's a trusted, known entity that serves those communities on a regular basis is a best practice. Thus, the United, the UFW Foundation was identified early on as an interested and prospective administrator who had the capacity and experience already in place and a good track record in working with the state. In fact, the state made a strong recommendation about the UFW Foundation as being the prime local administrator for this program. So as the local administrator, the UFW Foundation will take, will be the primary point of contact for eligible participants in coordination of intake and orientation. They will run a call center that will run from Sunday through Friday of each week. It will have extended evening hours. They will be providing coordination of wraparound services, whether they provide those directly or through coordination through other entities. And those could include transportation needs, the delivery of of three meals a day, access to PPE and personal necessities, basic public health outreach and education about COVID and how to isolate and quarantine, daily wellness checks, and of course, the direct financial assistance that I mentioned earlier. The Human Service Agency is acting as the county sponsor, so it'll oversee the program. It'll oversee contract administration, the fiscal compliance, reporting and coordination of the additional services need to support this program. We'll be leveraging our county partners, OES, Public Health and the Ag Commissioner and our Farm Worker Resource Program to support the wraparound services for this program. There, the the program funding runs through June 30th of this calendar year. And dependent upon the local needs, if we need more funding to support the need, we can make those requests of the state. So of the $1.351 million that's been allocated to Ventura County, $1.151 million approximately will go toward the foundation, the wraparound costs and the direct assistance. And then an additional $200,000 will be used for meal prep and delivery through a separate agreement. The hotel that will be the primary state-supported hotel is the Clock Tower Inn in Ventura. We do have a secondary hotel, which is the Rex Hotel, which is currently the hotel that we're using for the FEMA public health-supported motel stays for quarantine and isolation. So in closing, I would really like to thank the CEO's Office for support of this program and seeing the value and importance of bringing it to Ventura County. And most specifically, thanks to to Rego for his leadership on this issue and to Rosa Gonzalez also. The relationships that they have, existing relationships and trust and respect they have in the community with our our ag and farmworker populations, as well as the UFW Foundation, helped make this and cultivate this important relationship with the UFW Foundation, providing this opportunity. So I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have in consideration of this item.
Thank you very much for the presentation. What an exceptional program the state is bringing forward to assist with these real essential workers, our farmworkers. Not Supervisor Ramirez, did you have a question?
I just have a comment. I think it's a wonderful program. And I think for the, for people in our community don't understand the importance of these workers to our economy, what they do for us every day. The fact that during this entire year and before and continuing, none of us have ever gone to a market, a store, a farm stand and found it lacking in produce that these folks are picking at a great sacrifice to themselves and their physical health. And this is just really important. I really appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other questions for supervisors? And as I mentioned, we do have one public comment on this item specifically. And I believe that's Tim Totten. And as I see, he is on the telephone, is that correct? And if we could catch him in?
Actually Supervisor Parks, it is a read email from Gina Libby.
Okay, let's do that.
Good morning Chair Parks, Board Members and CEO Powers. The email from Gina Libby reads, "I have questions and concerns about the proposed partnership and distribution of 1,151,654 by the HSA to the UFWF. The funds from the state are provided in the name of COVID relief, providing temporary housing and other services, i.e. meals, wellness checks and wraparound services. Should an eligible farmworker or food processing worker not have the ability to isolate, quarantine if exposed to or test positive for COVID? The UFWF website states that they are the largest federally accredited immigration legal service provider in the state. It appears they are politically motivated, well-funded organization advocating around the country for 15 years for more equitable immigration reform. The money is supposed to be for temporary COVID relief, not immigration reform. Immigration reform should be debated in the legislature with public input following the proper process to enact an appropriate funds for legislation. In my opinion, this agenda item is sidestepping the process in a manner that is deceitful by omission in its discussion without any mention of UFWF as the state's largest immigration legal service provider in the state on the in the agenda's public documents. The board's approval would reflect yet another politically motivated action. There are over 4 million people struggling with hunger in California. Homelessness is a growing human tragedy. Children's self-harm is up 334% and opiates have killed more any year than ever, than ever recorded. And this is being non-mandatory item. The board's efforts, actions and directing of funds should at least be transparent and should. And then that's the 250-word limit. Thank you.
Thank you. And hearing, from my understanding, the funds are specifically to help in the isolation of farmworkers and not immigration reform per se. And is that correct, Ms. Livingston?
Yes, that is correct Supervisor Parks.
Okay. With that then, we've had our public comments, we have the agenda item before us. Is there a motion to authorize the director to?
I'm going to approve.
Thank you Supervisor Ramirez with a motion. Do we have a second to the motion?
Huber, second.
Thank you Supervisor Huber, we have a motion and a second. Could we please have the roll call?
Supervisor Lavier.
Yes.
Supervisor Long.
Yes.
Supervisor Huber.
Yes.
Supervisor Ramirez.
Yes.
Chair Parks.
Yes, thank you. And now we could go back to our public comments. Does that sound right? Not hearing any objections. Okay, so let's go to our public comments. And we have four individuals, as I understand. And our first is Tim McCarthy and he is on video. Good morning, Mr. McCarthy.
How much time would you like to give them Supervisor Parks?
I believe we have four speakers, so two minutes sound good.
Okay.
And Mr. McCarthy, if you'd just like to begin speaking, I think you'll come up.
Good morning. My name is Tim McCarthy and I have been a Thousand Oaks resident for over 20 years. I'm also the founder for the group Move the Needle. In the beginning of January, Supervisor Parks put forth a resolution condemning the riots of January 6th. Between January 12th and January 26th, the community called in and wrote emails that this is premature, that the facts are unknown. The people have been proven correct and the resolution proven wrong. Here are just a couple of bulleted items of lies and disinformation outlined in the resolution. Domestic terrorists came armed with pipe bombs, Molotov cocktails, assault rifles, handguns and hundreds of rounds of ammunition. This has been proven not to be true. No weapons of these were ever found. The horrific murder of Capitol Police Officer Brian Sicknick, who was beaten to death by a mob of extremists. Officer Sicknick was not beaten by a mob as proven by medical examiners and his family. This is an outright lie. But Supervisor Parks listened to media and started using the word extremist without just cause. Is it guilty until proven innocent or innocent until proven guilty? This resolution is a perfect example of when a person tries to impress a community instead of following the oath that she took. This is an example of jumping on the bandwagon of media with a political agenda and accusing people of crimes that have not been committed. This is an example of a leader of the group making a poor decision and the other members not having the courage to say no. I ask on behalf of this community, community of America-loving residents, that the board takes another vote, but this time to completely withdraw this resolution, knowing that the facts have proven to be lies and misinformation. Withdraw it and learn to get the facts before speaking on behalf, which leads me to my next point. Supervisor Parks has been calling citizens of the community extremists. An extremist has a terrible negative connotation related to ISIS and Al Qaeda. Demonstrating our freedom of speech and right to assemble on a bridge is not extreme. As a matter of fact, this action is guaranteed by the US Constitution and is the way to properly motivate political politicians to address grievances. This is not being extremist, no damage ever done and no person ever physically harmed. Supervisor Parks is unethically calling out Move the Needle as a group and proud members of the community as extremists, and this needs to stop. We will not tolerate any more lies and disinformation. God bless Ventura County and the United States and thank you for your time.
Thank you. The resolution that you are concerned about was our Board of Supervisors denouncing the attack by the mob on the Capitol. And so I can understand you disagree, but I think the facts are there. And let's go on now to Tim Totten. And Mr. Totten, you are on the telephone, as I understand. If we could let we also have Ms. Totten. Okay, please go forward.
Okay, so I don't have necessarily prepared statements, but what I did do was I filed a California Public Records Act on that very resolution that you claim you had facts on. But every document that you provided to me was simply an email that was just created by Linda Parks and it was just saluted and appreciated by all the other board members. You provided me no facts. I asked for any police reports, statistics, news articles, any fact, literal fact that you used in support of those erroneous claims, and you provided none. What I asked is this literally it, this one email chain that Susan Hughes and Linda Parks and Mike Powers were engaged in? That's literally it, what you created the resolution. Susan Hughes responded that she had provided all of the responsive documents, which means yes. There was zero facts that you used to put together that resolution which spoke for every Ventura County resident. And it was totally factually incorrect and wrong and politically motivated. And you should be ashamed of yourself and the board, you should all be ashamed of yourselves for how you're behaving in this political bandwagon nonsense. And that's all I have to say to you.
Thank you. And again, that was express concern at our board option of a resolution denouncing the siege of the Capitol. The next speaker, as I understand it, is Suzanne Totten. Are you also on the phone there, Ms. Totten?
Hi. Hello?
Yes, we can hear you. Please proceed.
Great. Thank you. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I am also very concerned about the resolution. Tim McCarthy has said it so well, but really, I was appalled to see that Brian Sicknick died of a stroke. Even CNN has had to retract it now. You need to stick to the facts. That is what you need to do. It was, it was just appalling to me. And then I have other concerns about this racism crisis that we're having in Ventura County. I am trying to understand it. What I've read so far is it relates to George Floyd, which happens in a different state. I don't understand. And then I called into the last meeting. I heard something about someone was asked why she was buying so much bleach. This, these are not reasons. These are not facts. Before you go spending taxpayer dollars, you have to have data and you have to have your facts together. And you know, there's many other issues I could go through today, but overall, the way you're treating your constituents is unacceptable. The censorship, doing your own small businesses. I'd like you to really, really consider who elected you here and who you are here to serve. Thank you.
Thank you. And our board is concerned about the killing of George Floyd, even if it happened in a different state, I know that. So then we have a final speaker, Max Guinness, and you're on video. Mr. Guinness. There you go. If you just begin speaking, you'll come up.
Thank you, Supervisors. I'd like to tell you about my friend Jim Pagels. Jim is 29, and after college, he worked as a writer before discovering a passion for economics, a passion we share. As a PhD student at the University of Michigan, his research focuses on urban economics, how to make cities more affordable, vibrant, and safe. When the pandemic turned everything remote, he returned to Washington, Washington, D.C., a city he loved. Jim bikes everywhere, and last Friday, he bikes to get his vaccine. He tweeted a half-serious economics joke about the dangerous route he had to take, saying, quote, "Head to bike through a roundabout over a highway to get my COVID jab. Lifespan maximization function is clearly perfectly well-calibrated." Later that night, he was biking through Northwest DC when a motorist hit him and a car beside him from behind. He was pushed into the intersection where he was hit by two other cars. By the time Jim arrived in the hospital, he was dead. Now, I'm not here to tell you that I'll miss the economics discussions or chess games I enjoyed with Jim as much as I will. I'm here to do what Jim would do if the same thing happened to one of his friends. Jim would tell you that Ventura County bicyclists encounter the same dangers as DC bicyclists, if not worse. He'd say how crazy it is that DC commuters are eight times more likely to cycle them Ventura County commuters, even though the weather is so much nicer. He'd take studies finding that protected bike lanes increase the rate of bicycling and avert fatalities for cyclists and motorists alike. Jim would remember to tell a personal story, like how scary it is when I bike on Victoria in Oxnard where I live, directly adjacent to motorists driving 60 miles an hour. And he'd make sure to connect the dots to our exclusionary zoning policies that require residents to live so far from jobs and services that roads end up dominated by vehicles, vehicles like the ones that killed him. People want to, who want to swap car trips for bike trips, whether for the planet, their health, or their pocketbook, they shouldn't have to worry about ending up like my friend Jim or the 200 bicyclists who are hit by cars in Ventura County every year. You can fix this. You can prioritize dense mixed-use housing and protected bike lanes in the general plan. You can end single-family zoning codes that push us farther apart and into cars. You can end parking minimums that force cars onto the streets with each new home. You can pass resolutions in support of state legislation that ends the dangerous sprawl and vehicle dominance across California. Please take action so that the deaths of people like Jim become exceptions, not expectations. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Guinness. And that, so sorry to hear of your friend. And it is absolutely a priority with our county to ensure safe bike lanes, and we will continue that. Please stay engaged. And then as I understand it, we have another individual who we will read into the record their comment. Is that correct, Ms. Martinez?
Yes, we received one email from Sunny, and it says, Dear Supervisors, when it comes to vaccination, it is up to individuals' choices. I'm not pro-vaccine or anti-vaccine. I'm pro-liberty. I don't know which doctor you talk to over the weekend, but the information people are learning is from top, top doctors in this country, and I would respectfully refer you to some self-educated about vaccines. And then there's a link provided. It says you are a public servant paid by the Fed taxpayers. You're not grandparents to either people. Thank you, Sunny.
Hey, that concludes our comments, our public comments. And our first time certain isn't until 11:00, so we can go, continue going through our regular agenda. And so at this time, we could go to our public com, I'm sorry, our board comments. We just did public comments. We can go to our board comments, and why don't we do that beginning by district and start with District One Supervisor, Mr. Matt Lavier.
Great. Thank you, Madam Chair. I would start by just asking that we close today's meeting in honor of the list of individuals that my staff presented to the, to the clerk. And there's one individual I want to call out, and that is Paul Blatts. Many of you knew Paul. He was a two-time mayor of the city of Ventura, served eight, I'm sorry, the city of Ojai. Served eight years on that Ojai City Council. Was deeply engaged in that community for decades. His son, Ryan, who was a classmate of mine growing up, is currently on the city council, and both Paul and the Blatts family have just been such stewards of the quality of life in Ojai and just such great residents and community representatives. He passed away during our two-week break, but I wanted to recognize him, his lifetime of service to the city of Ojai and the county, and ask that we close today's meeting in his memory. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Lavier. Supervisor, let's see, Supervisor number three is Supervisor Long, correct?
Yes, thank you very much, Madam Chair.
They're district.
Sorry, just chuckling. So first of all, we have a very important town hall coming up. It's a Ventura County Homeowners Insurance Virtual Town Hall. We are having that on April 22nd from 2:30 to 3:30. And this is with our California Insurance Commissioner, Laura, myself, and the Regional Fire Safe Council to ensure, as we've had fires for over the last four years, if people do not understand the importance of the insurance, we'd like to invite everyone in to really see what the changes are going on. And so you can look on my social media or website, and we have the information. For, again, it's Thursday, April 22nd, 2:30 to 3:30 on Zoom, just to address fire preparations and resources for homeowners. The next one I would like to bring up, if someone can pull up the slide that we sent over? Yes, I mentioned it earlier, and Dr. Levin and Rigo Vargas, I know they jumped off to a phone call with the state. They wanted to say thank you so much. It is the National Public Health Week. And it's extremely important as we've been going through for the last year. And, and so how important our public health is our essential in health workers, and wanted to take just a moment to say thank you for all the work that everyone does in regards to this. Many do not know what public health works on, but we sure do now with this pandemic, and appreciate all of their efforts. So I wanted to say thank you. The next item I have, I know that Supervisor Parks will be talking about it later, is our National Telecommunication Week and Dispatchers Recognition. Just huge thanks to our 911 group for all that you're doing. People don't know we need your help until we call you. And so some take it for granted that you're always there, and just want to appreciate that. Lastly, we have just, you know, adjourning on the memory of the list is Georgia Carpenter. And she was just a special woman, Portlandian, and we will, we will be missing her and her vitality and just hope for the whole community. She was just a spark of life that we will definitely miss, and so want to adjourn in memory of her honor. So that's it for this week. Thank you.
Thank you Supervisor Long. And Supervisor, the fourth district Supervisor Huber, would you like to go next?
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I, I think I can speak for a lot of people in this county when I'm saying I'm excited to get our economy up and running again. I greatly appreciate the assistance given to our local businesses by our, our CEO and staff, especially Paul Stamper and Scott Powers, who have both done a tremendous job. To the EDC VC for their tireless efforts to help small and large businesses alike to stay afloat in these difficult times. And lastly, I want to recognize the Fourth District Business Recovery Task Force, started by my office in partnership with our Chambers of Commerce, City Councils, and city staff from Moore Park and Simi Valley. I cannot say enough of how effective this group was in helping businesses adhere to health orders while continuing to survive. Early on in the pandemic, we conducted telephone surveys to all local businesses to reach out to them and see what they needed. Our newest effort is posting jobs needed and jobs available for local business. Our work is not through. Thank you to all of you. It's been a trying time, and I know we are not done yet. So stay safe, keep up your excellent work. And in closing, I'd like to adjourn in memory of the residents cited on the list I sent to the clerk of the board. Thank you very much.
Thank you Supervisor Huber. And Supervisor Ramirez, would you like to go next?
Yes, thank you very much. I appreciate the comments of my colleagues here, and in particular Supervisor Lavier's memory of Paul Blatts, who I also knew as a fellow attorney, who was very helpful to people in his community and throughout the county. So he will be missed. And also, I have presented a list of people who passed away in my district, also an ask that we adjourn in their memory. I had the opportunity on Sunday to attend a granting of a Congressional Medal of Honor to a gentleman, Arnold Jew of Santa Paula. Supervisor Long's representative was there, Manuel Mihares, as she was unable to be there. Mr. Jew is a, he was a corporal in the Army, and he volunteered draft, or he volunteered and drafted in December 44. He did basic training at Camp Roberts. He went to Yale University to learn Mandarin, to serve the U.S. Army. And then he was transferred overseas after the war ended to Shanghai, China, where he worked for the Counterintelligence Corps until July 46, came home and was honorably discharged. Congressional Medal of Honor for the Chinese-American veterans was established at the, proposed by the Chinese-American community of our country. Chinese-Americans were excluded from our country by the Chinese Exclusion Act, which was actually still in effect during World War II. Despite that, almost 20,000 Chinese-Americans volunteered for service and served honorably. The Congress established the Congressional Medal of Honor for these folks. And because it had to be, he couldn't go to Washington, Mr. Jew. We did a presentation in, at his home in Santa Paula with representatives of our supervisors, Senator Limon, Congresswoman Brownlee was there, and also the mayor and council members of the city of Santa Paula. So I want to recognize Mr. Jew and the other veterans and the efforts of our Asian-American community to support our democracy. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much Supervisor Ramirez, and that our board have an opportunity to stand up against Asian-American Pacific Islander and Native Hawaiian hate crimes. And that's what we're starting to see related to COVID particularly. And so I've asked that, we have a presentation that we will have at a future board meeting. And I'm glad to see that our, our sheriff and our district attorney are happy to present to us to give us an understanding of the hate crimes that are out there and of what it is that we can do. And we also have our Diversity Officer, Pin Zaytanya. And I'm so happy that she also is going to help with a tutorial for individuals who may just be bystanders and witness crimes against this community, and give us some tools of what we can do in those situations too, to support them. So I appreciate you bringing that information forward Supervisor Ramirez. And Supervisor Long, as you mentioned, this is a public health week. It's also happens to be a few other memorial weeks and months. So I asked our IT if they can put up some of these resolutions, you know. Generally, we would have each one of these separately and present it to individuals who are leading these efforts. But unfortunately, because our board is 100% Zoom, we don't have that opportunity, but it's still so important to recognize. This is also the week of the young child, and that's April 10th through April 16th. And this goes to look at the wonderful organizations like the Local Planning Council of Ventura County that's trying to improve the quality and accessibility of education services for our youth. And that our Board of Supervisors urges all our citizens to recognize and support the needs of young children in our community. And recognize there are some wonderful, high-quality programs for them. And for not only the children, but also families. And our Human Services Agency is there for individuals who would like to have more information, as well as our, obviously, the Ventura County Local Planning Council. The next resolution, we have National Public Safety Telecommunications Week. And Supervisor Long mentioned this too. This really is in honor and tremendous respect for those 911 dispatchers. They are that calm voice that answers the call and provides that critical support to our deputies and first responders and our citizens who can, you know, get information right then and there how to save a life, you know, through CPR, for example. So we just so much thank you for the good work you do. You save lives every day, and sometimes you are unsung heroes. So consider you have been sung to, because we do so appreciate the great work of our 911 dispatchers. And then the next resolution, this is also for, the Department of Motor Vehicles has a Donate Life Month. And so this resolution recognized just more than 33,000 lives just last year were benefited from donors of individuals who had died, whether that's through their organ, eye, tissue donors. Regardless of age, and people can check off that box and become a donor and save lives. And we've had such great presentations in the past at our Board of Supervisors with individuals who have benefited and were there before us, only because of the generous generosity of individuals who have given their permission to have their organs and tissues donated upon their death. And the next item, which is similar, you know, while we have services to help improve and educate for lives of children, it is also Child Abuse Prevention Month. And we know that our child abuse lines have received 22,185 calls of child abuse and neglect calls, and that was between 2019 and 2020. 3,000 of those, we in an average of 1,000 children and families each month were provided with services and support to overcome abuse and neglect in Ventura County. And that is just a shocking number. And each year, that number, you know, is there, and each year, we wish we didn't have to have services. And each year, that number, you know, is there and each year we wish we didn't have to have services to provide. But it really does take an entire community to step up. There are many dedicated agencies and parents, relatives, community volunteers, public policy makers, professionals that are collaborating their efforts to eliminate child abuse. And we so appreciate the good work that they are doing and wanted to recognize them too for really difficult work. And again, our Human Service Agency, our social workers that go out. We know this has to be one of the most difficult jobs there are on earth and we thank you for the good work that you do. I also have a list that I'm asking that we close in honor of, and I will, it has been submitted to the clerk, Patricia Fawen Smith Aske, and she was actually Miss Burbank Beauty Pageant. She was a runner-up in 1948 with Debbie Reynolds, just, you know, people's lives that so many we have lost. But we are definitely closing in their honor and the rest of the board have submitted names also and we do that when we can. So with that, then, that concludes the board comment and we're going to go to our CEO, Mr. Mike Powers for his comments.
Thank you Chair Parks, board members. On behalf of your board, on March nineteenth, I participated in the Ventura County Community Foundation's Impact Series, Speaker Series on the Rapid Response Fund and your board and county and as well as Amgen were honored as key partners in this effort, along with Food Share, Mycop, EDC, and the Westminster Free Clinic. On just this past Friday, April ninth, on your behalf, I participated in a panel for the United Ways, United to End Homelessness Virtual Symposium. His keynote speaker was Dr. Matthew Desmond, the author of the book Evicted. Very compelling approach to talking about people who are facing homelessness and in a really human level individual, just really highlighting that each person is different and their struggles are different. And so our response needs to be uniquely tailored to each person. So I thought it was very powerful. And as I say, spoke on behalf of your board, the continuum of care and the work that's happening in partnership with our cities, joined by Congresswoman Julia Brownlee and Senator Henry Stern, among others. On April twelfth, I participated in Food Share's Feeding Our County COVID Response one year later. I want to congratulate Dr. Cesar Morales, who was appointed on March twenty-ninth as the Superintendent of Schools for the Office of Education. Just a wonderful choice. Dr. Morales has been a tremendous partner to our county before the pandemic and during the pandemic, in partnership with Public Health and schools, education and vaccinating teachers in the month of March. So congratulations to him. And as I say, he'll be, there'll be a swearing-in ceremony on April sixteenth. And that's it. Thank you so much.
Thank you. I'm always so delighted to remember to call on you. It's a great report. Thank you for going to all those meetings on our behalf, Mr. Powers.
Thank you Chair Parks.
And now I will go to item, I believe we go to twenty-eight, and this is on our regular agenda because it's not quite eleven yet. And this is an item that I'm bringing forward and I'm requesting that our board add to our legislative platform the, what would allow for the support of specifically, actually, the support to Senate Bill seven nine zero. And this is by our Senator Henry Stern. And what it does is it enables the use of state mitigation credits for wildlife crossing facilities on our state highways. And this is something that will enable Caltrans to be able to access those mitigation funds for their projects too. And it's important, I think, in our county particularly, as we look at different crossings and it's in complements our wildlife corridor zone. And once Caltrans qualifies for these mitigation credits, they can then use these projects consistent with what other been able to do on other projects. So this bill would provide parity for wildlife crossings too. So I would ask your support for that. And it's no cost to our county. And with that, I'll make the motion. Is there's a second?
I will second.
Thank you. Supervisor Ramirez, I think, might have beat you to the punch there Supervisor. Not one, so we have a long second. Could we please have a roll call?
Supervisor Leveer?
Yes.
Supervisor Long?
Yes.
Supervisor Huber?
Yes.
Supervisor Ramirez?
Yes.
Chair Parks?
Yes, thank you. We'll get that letter of support in. Our next item on the agenda then is Agenda twenty-nine, and this is with Supervisor Long, so I'll turn it over to you.
Yes, thank you very much. This is a recommendation to reappoint Patricia Param to the Ventura County Civil Service Commission. She's been serving it well and is chair currently, so I'd like to motion to reappoint Patricia Param. Thank you.
We have a motion and do we have a second?
Huber, second.
Thank you Supervisor Huber. And could we have the roll call?
Supervisor Leveer?
Yes.
Supervisor Long?
Yes.
Supervisor Huber?
Yes.
Supervisor Ramirez?
Yes.
Chair Parks?
Yes, thank you. And the next item on the agenda is Agenda Item thirty. And I am going to turn it over to Supervisor Huber. This is your item.
Yes, thank you. I would like to recommend Chris DeHala for appointment to the Behavioral Health Advisory Board. As a lifelong Moore Park resident and as a consumer, I think this young man will be bringing a unique insight and enthusiasm to the advisory board. Therefore, I would move approval.
Thank you.
I'll second it.
And we have a second from Supervisor Ramirez. And just let me say thank you so much Supervisor Huber. We have a deficit in the clients and consumers who need to be on that board. So it's just grateful that you have appointed one. So we have a motion as second. Could we please have a roll call?
Supervisor Leveer?
Yes.
Supervisor Long?
Yes.
Supervisor Huber?
Yes.
Supervisor Ramirez?
Yes.
Chair Parks?
Yes, thank you. And now we'll go to item number thirty-two. And this is with our healthcare agency. And I believe Dr. Finkhauser and Mr. Zimmerman will be presenting this one.
No. Yes, I don't see Dr. Finkhauser on the call, but I will cover the item. These are a number of contracts that are regularly pretty standard to finish out the year and need adjustments to in order to fulfill the terms of agreements and services. Many have to relate with the facilities and operations of the hospital. One I do want to call out is on the Huffmaster. It's a labor contract that we put into place related to COVID response. And this is an amendment to finish out the year of that. It is anticipated that after this fiscal year, we will no longer need the COVID staffing at that level and return to pre-COVID levels going forward. And that cost should be covered for and is allocated under the CARES program.
Thank you. I really like the idea that we're planning for post-COVID. Time to move on. So do we have a motion on this agenda item?
Long, a motion.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. Could we please have a roll call?
Supervisor Leveer?
Yes.
Supervisor Long?
Yes.
Supervisor Huber?
Yes.
Supervisor Ramirez?
Yes.
Chair Parks?
Yes, thank you. And we cannot go to thirty-three yet because that is not until 11:00 AM. So we have a little time there.
Correspondence agenda?
Just going to say that. How about Correspondence Agenda? Do we have a motion for that?
A.
We do have a motion from Supervisor Huber. Do we have a second on that?
I'll second.
Thank you Supervisor Ramirez. And can we have a roll call on that?
Yes, Correspondence Agenda thirty-nine and forty Supervisor Leveer?
Yes.
Supervisor Long?
Yes.
Supervisor Huber?
Yes.
Supervisor Ramirez?
Yes.
Chair Parks?
Yes. And I'm going to do something. I suggest we recess until 11:00 and we'll take a short break and then we'll be back. Does that work for?
Yes.
Projection? Okay, we will do that. See you all at 11:00 AM. This is our Board of Supervisors meeting of April thirteenth, and our item on for 11:00 AM is Item thirty-three. And this is with Mr. David Fleisch. And this is regarding our Public Works Agency Roads and Transportation Efforts. So please go forward, Mr. Fleisch.
Good morning Chair Parks, Supervisors and Mr. Powers. For the record, I'm David Fleisch with the Public Works Agency. The item before you today is to authorize the Public Works Agency to accept active transportation program grant funds in the amount of $6.195 million for the El Rio Pedestrian Improvement and Safe Route to School project. This grant funding award is significant for several reasons. First, this is the fifth application cycle of ATP where the California Transportation Commission has managed the evaluation process at the state level. Although there have been many applications in each of the previous cycles by PWA in many of the cities in Ventura County, this is the first statewide funded ATP project awarded to any agency in the county. Previous grant awards were from the Prada SCAG Regional Allocation, in which Ventura County share annually is about three and a half million dollars. Second, this is the largest individual grant award anyone can recall that PWA Roads and Transportation has received. And this project is a result of the Safe Route to School Study of the Unincorporated County completed and received by your board in 2018. A key component of this grant application was the public outreach to receive feedback and indicate support for the proposed improvements. This outreach was conducted in July and August of 2020 during COVID. It was accomplished through mail, print advertising, and an online ad campaign, online campaign in English and Spanish. The online portion also included videos in English, Spanish, and mixed Teco. Supervisors Aragosa and Israel Vasquez from the Farmworker Resource Program narrated the videos. As a result of this outreach, we received over 1,400 web link clicks and a total of 343 survey responses, both online and in the mail. These responses showed a strong preference for the sidewalks and also provided preferences for which streets to add the sidewalks to. This information was directly then added in to help define the project's scope and details. Pending your questions, the recommendation is for your board to approve acceptance of the statewide ATP grant funds.
This is so exciting, so exceptional. Oh, my gosh. Supervisor Ramirez, did you want to comment?
Yes, and clearly, there's so much work has been done, obviously, before I got here. I want to thank our Public Works folks and all of the people who helped make this possible, all the community members that responded. Keeping, this is part of keeping our children safe as they go and come back from school when they are fully reopened, which we're in process now. So I really want to thank you for this terrific. Congratulations.
And Supervisor Long, you want to comment?
Yes, I just wanted to say today, thank you so much for making sure we get this grant. We've utilized this grant in the Camrio Heights and it has just made getting to school, the transportation, just so much better. And the community is just so thankful of it. So I want to say just great job because I know El Rio will appreciate it just as much. So thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. And $6 million in sidewalks. And our county isn't necessarily big on doing sidewalks and unincorporated area, they often look at sidewalks as more of an urban use. But there are certainly communities like El Rio that definitely need them. So thank you for getting this. And I know this is just going to do tremendous work towards benefiting the children who go to school, but everyone who lives there. So good luck with that and great outreach.
And also Supervisor Parks, just to make sure that our community knows, the school boards and the school districts really do need to think about providing those sidewalks for those schools. It's not just the county that is supposed to be doing it. It's actually the school districts. And so I appreciate this grant because we're able to help them. But as we create new schools, I am hopeful that those sidewalks and such are in the plan, so we don't have to do added cost. Thank you.
In the addition of schools, but when you have a school that doesn't have a sidewalk, it really does leave it to the government agencies that do the public works to provide those sidewalks. And I know they're looking at the same in Somus, for example, where you have an elementary school and no sidewalks. It's just those kind of areas. I remember in the city of Thousand Oaks too, in a Canayo School, that was something that I pushed hard for because right in front of the school, there wasn't even a sidewalk. So we definitely should plan on them, like you say, when we build new schools. But otherwise, we really do need to make sure that they happen. Wonderful work, Mr. Fleisch, for you and your group. We have a motion from Supervisor Ramirez.
I'll second by Supervisor Long.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Could we please have a roll call?
Supervisor Leveer?
Yes.
Supervisor Long?
Yes.
Supervisor Huber?
Yes.
Supervisor Ramirez?
Yes, and I want to say I grew up in a neighborhood without sidewalks of schools. And when it rained, it's pretty messy. Thank you.
Chair Parks?
Yes, thank you. And with that, that's approved. That is really is something for Ashley to get out there because it is just such good news. And I'll tell you, these days, we appreciate all the good news we can get, right? So that's a wonderful one and so happy for the community. And I know we've had a few items on El Rio lately and just wonderful to see the benefits coming that way. Okay, so we have another 11:00 AM time certain, and that is Item thirty-four. And this is with our healthcare agency. And I'll turn it over to Dr. Cho and Mr. Zimmerman.
Very good. Thank you. I think Dr. Cho, we have to see if she can get in. I don't see her yet, so.
There she is.
All right. And I think, Mike, you're going to kick us off here.
Oh, thank you very, yes, Chair Parks, board members. And I will just, while I tell you, yeah, this is a significant transition for our healthcare agency, ambulatory care clinic system. And I will, after Dr. Cho's presentation, I'll be making a few comments at the end. Thank you.
All right, thank you. We'll turn the time over to Dr. Cho and have her go through the presentation. And we'll be here for questions as we go through the presentation. Okay, I just got a text said she was kicked out, so she's trying to get back in. So.
I'm sure it was unintentional.
Good morning.
There she is.
There you are.
I'm sorry. Good morning, everyone. Good morning Chair Parks, CEO Powers, and members of the board. If you could move to slide two, please. I'm Teresa Cho, CEO of Ambulatory Care for the Healthcare Agency. I'd like to start by presenting a status update on our clinic integration project. We've completed the assessment and the planning stages, phase one and two, and we are currently in phase three, working on clinic transitions to a system that continues to support the mission of our safety net clinics that provide high-quality care to all patients. Next slide, please. As presented to your board in December, the integration plan addresses several opportunities to improve the efficiency and stability of the ambulatory care system, while also considering the final ruling from the Public Employee Relations Board regarding the county's role as a joint employer for the non-physician clinic staff. The clinic redesign creates an infrastructure that allows for greater oversight and collaboration. Staffing will be right-sized and strategically deployed across the system. Additional system efficiencies will include a centralized call center and a referral center, which will ensure optimal utilization of our resources and a streamlined process for the patient. We will coordinate with our fiscal team to improve revenue cycle processes and monitor financial performance. Next slide. This table illustrates the pro forma projections for the clinic integration. The operating income deficit seen in year one is cut by over half by year two, with further decreases year over year as we move through the process of resetting the PPS or prospective payment system rates at our FQHC clinics. Resetting those rates will amplify the gains we see from increased productivity. Resetting those rates will amplify the gains we see from increased productivity and decreased expenses. And by year two, the net income and net equity are in a positive position. By year five, the operating income is positive even without the performance based supplemental funding. Next slide. We currently have six hundred and thirty four support staff in our clinics. Our pro forma analysis included a reduction in staff of seventy two FTEs. Over half of that reduction will occur at the outset of the transition, reducing the staff to the five hundred and ninety six FTEs needed to support the day to day operations at the clinics. The ratios of staff to provider were determined in conjunction with ECG consultants based on industry benchmarks, operational improvements, and local considerations, such as the size of the clinic, number of waiting rooms, and the physical layout of the clinic itself. Of note, ECG recommended a total support staff ratio of four point four to one provider. You'll see that in the bottom right hand corner. Next slide. This slide gives more specific details on the staffing categories for those positions that we're requesting. These are the positions that we've determined are needed to ensure continuity of care for our patients and for a smooth transition. The future state staffing ratios reflect that support for a very sizable and complex integration. Next slide. The slide includes the number of FTEs for the including the advanced practice practitioners and the support staff with the current request to your board to adopt a resolution to add six hundred and ten point nine full time equivalent positions for the healthcare agencies ambulatory care clinic integration project. Notably, the staff does not include the physician staff, which will include seventy four FTEs or a hundred and four physician count, which will come to your board at a later date. Next slide. The staff who are currently working at the eighteen federally qualified health centers will have first opportunity to apply for these positions under county employment. Human Resources has developed a crosswalk of physicians from current positions to the future state jobs. HR has also developed a brochure to explain the simplified application process, and we plan on following this up with a Zoom Town Hall next week to answer questions about the process. There will also be additional opportunities for employment in other ambulatory care programs. Next slide. Lastly, upon implementation of the clinic integration plan, ambulatory care will conduct biannual evaluations to assess the progress towards its goals. The data will include staffing ratios to analyze the efficient and appropriate distribution of staff, productivity and patient access, and performance on financial and quality measures. I look forward to presenting these reports to your board. I'll pause for questions.
Thank you, Dr. Cho. If I may, Chair Parks, make a few subtle little comments. Thank you. So this is a significant transition effort. As we know, there's a hundred and ten thousand patients connected to our wonderful ambulatory care system. About seven hundred employees at eighteen different sites and, you know, many independent type operations all being integrated into one system. So there's a lot of moving parts there. There's a really strong plan in place that's been outlined. It is a five year projection to get there, but just want to assure your board and the community that really the staff, I think, is being appropriately conservative in their projections in terms of revenue achievements and so forth. But that does not mean that they are going to not work as quickly as possible to achieve these goals even sooner than then. You know, while the projections are restrained, the effort to implement the goals will not be, I would say. And just for example, many of the efforts that the agency can control are going into effect right away. For example, the productivity and quality incentives are going into effect July one over half of the staffing adjustments right away. The centralized call center will go into effect in September. So they are doing everything they can right away to achieve these goals as quickly as possible. There are some areas where they don't have as much control, and that is rate resetting. So the these federally qualified health centers are overseen by a federal body called HERSA that they make the determination on resetting the rates for each reimbursement level for each clinic visits. And the agency is going to move as quickly as it can to apply for that resetting and to move through that process. But they can, they can only, they can't make HERSA move any faster than they're going to. We'll control what we can control. And but again, they're just trying to be realistic, but every effort will be made to achieve these goals as quickly as possible and to close the operational shortfalls as quickly as possible. We appreciate everybody's efforts in getting here. We've had good meetings with the Taxpayers Association, Dave Brown and his team to review the specific information, and we appreciate those good questions and that dialogue. And also want to recognize just all the partners that have helped get here, the agency leadership, the human resources department, our labor partners, as well as the employees and the physicians in the system. Because they're providing the high quality of care every day to these to these patients. And that is so critical. So one of the things that as this transition happens, the agency and these physicians will ensure is that they will maintain continuity of care and quality always. So thank you. Happy to answer any questions as well. Thank you.
We do have some questions. I saw Supervisor Long and I believe Supervisor Ramirez.
Thank you, Dr. Cho. Could you go back to where it talks about the budget from year one to five, if you could?
Sure. I'm hoping someone else can help me move there.
I am not sure who's driving today.
One, one more.
There you go.
Thank you very much. I think this is an extremely important slide, especially for all of our taxpayers. Appreciate VCTTC for our BCTA, the taxpayer association, to really reviewing our income for our hospital and of our clinics on the county oversight committee, Ventura County Oversight at our funds and making sure that we're going to be not in the red. That's an important factor. And so I wanted to just make sure Dr. Cho, you had stated that we'll be going over these. So I just wanted to make sure we're going over these at the oversight committee. We'll also be reviewing these on our quarterly budgets that the board of supervisors we have. That's correct, right?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Okay. Yeah, absolutely.
The reason being is this is a very large project. It seems like we have been the mission for the last four years is this is the first time this has ever happened, or, you know, Thomas Fire, this is the first thing we've done. There's so many firsts, and this, this is a great first that I'm really proud to be a part of because in the oversight committee, I just wanted to make sure that the other board members know we're really talking about patient care and the call centers and making sure that people can make appointments. And Dr. Cho, I really appreciate you looking at all of this when we're combining their clinics and then working with the hospital to get patients the care that they need. And I wanted to make sure that that is not represented on the budget slide that we're seeing here. I think that is going to, we're going to have such great care. And I'm really excited. I know that our revenue will be looking at that, but the overall is really patient care. And I think that's the driving force of this clinics coming together all as one. And as we talked about employees, appreciate the physicians in meeting with all of us, many of us to talk about patient care and and all the different paperwork and so forth that are our constituents that go to these clinics need help with and SCIU to really make sure that we have those nurses and staff to assist those doctors so that we can have that patient care. And wanted to make sure that people knew also that we, it's a process improvement. So it doesn't mean that we're not changing things in year five if it doesn't work. We are constantly evaluating our systems and processes to make sure that it is working as best and efficiently for all. So it's a full circle and wanted to make sure we touch base on that. So appreciate everyone's outreach to us. I know that no, no one ever wants to take a project and say, well, first, it shows that our income is going to be a loss. But I think that just like the hospital system, you will see great things going on and state of the art and the physicians that want to work for us because they're providing such great care. So I wanted to say thank you, Dr. Cho and Mr. Powers, Barry Zimmerman, all of you for really a huge project and one that we don't do every day. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Long. I really appreciate your comments and, you know, just the understanding that this is a process. Absolutely. We're going to hit the ground running. But it is, you know, a process in which we're going to, you know, evaluate and reevaluate our successes. We have great doctors and top notch staff, and we want to make sure that we lend the support that they need to make sure that they can do the patient care that they've done so well all along. And I think that's really speaks to the system efficiencies that we're looking for so that things are easier and that the access is increased to the community at large.
And and what reassured me was your comments in regards to not looking for new patients, but really serving the patients we currently have and that we can, we can turn the ship around just even with that. I think it's extremely important to understand.
Absolutely. As Mr. Powers mentioned, we have a hundred and ten thousand patients, and we need the the access for those patients that we have to get in. We have a very high percentage of vulnerable patients, including homeless. We have twelve thousand homeless folks to take care of. And so we want to make sure that we're there for everyone in the community that comes to us.
And if I may do that, increased productivity, the other side of that is increased access. That means people getting into the doctor more quickly, better care, better access. And then, as you can see in this chart, stronger long term financial stability for the system as well, which will benefit our patients and our providers and employees.
Thank you very much.
You're muted. Yes, Chair.
Great. Well, I did say thank you to Supervisor Long for her good questions and Supervisor Ramirez, if you'd like to go next.
Yes, and Supervisor Long said a lot of things that I would have liked to have said, but she she did it well. Thank you. I want to just ask two questions. One is what opportunity will the patients have, Dr. Cho, for providing information about their confidence, their satisfaction level? And I think clinics are already doing that to some extent, but I think that's a really key thing.
Absolutely. So patients at our clinics will either get a phone call or an email, depending on what they've stated as their preference regarding a survey after they've seen their provider. And it asks everything from how was your visit? Would you recommend your physician to someone else? To what were the facilities like and how long did you wait? And we've been tracking that. You know, our our targeted goal to have, you know, over eighty two percent of respondents say that their physician was a nine or a ten out of ten. We've met that goal. And I think what, you know, it's now time to not only look at that, but look at other issues such as the wait times as well as the state of our facilities, et cetera. And I think, you know, that's a comprehensive look that we need to do regarding the data that we collect based on those surveys. So to your point, Supervisor Ramirez, we do survey our patients to understand how satisfied they are with the visit and to figure out what opportunities we have for improvement.
And I expect that the surveys are conducted in a way that people who speak Spanish or Mesteco or another language can give feedback, correct?
Yes, that's correct. So the language preference is taken into account when the survey is sent out.
Well, you know, this is a huge task, and ultimately, the goal is to have better, better, more efficient, more just using our resources better for the benefit of our community. But I'd like to just also remind our community that the county of Ventura, like other counties in our state, are required to provide indigent folks medical care and other services. So this is not just something we do because we should because it's a moral imperative, but it's a requirement under state law that people get, people without the financial means to get assistance, such as our homeless population perhaps, have access to good medical care. So really congratulate you and send you strength for this huge task. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor.
And I would note, too, that nationwide, healthcare is pretty much broken in the United States. And it's for people even of means to get healthcare sometimes can totally break them. And that can lead to homelessness and other things, too. So just realizing it's difficult for any hospital to make a profit and really why I appreciate public hospitals and nonprofit hospitals because the goal should not be a profit, you know, sustainability is our goal. And it's not easy to do. And just looking at the long term and having seen what I have seen in the last decade, you know, we we have not been able to, you know, make it profitable, but that can't be the goal, you know, we have to just be able to provide the best services that we can and and make it pay for itself to the best of our ability. But I don't have those expectations because things are so egregiously overpriced in the in the medical world, we'll find. So I'm glad it spurred because of some concerns that we heard from the unions about whether the county oversaw the clinics or not. And we we push forward on the existing model, and we were told that's not going to work. So this is the the next generation, and I do see it as an opportunity which our staff has taken to make it better, you know, to make it more efficient, to put in performance measures that were not there before. I I know that you can have such a wonderful system if you with just some good efficiencies, you know, that it becomes a pleasurable experience. And we're seeing it even with distribution of vaccines, you know, hearing from the public like how easy it was for them to walk in and get that vaccine because we we can schedule it and we can make sure that we have the resources. So I'm hoping that is a good model of what we'll see also with the rest of our healthcare and not having to have long wait times and and making sure that we can scale it appropriately. And we know, too, that it changes. You know, sometimes there are a lot more patients than other times. So having more flexibility, I think, will help, too, and and keeping you know, keeping those patients happy because we want them to, you know, get the healthcare they need and feel confident in our system. Are there other comments? Supervisor Lavier?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I want to start by thanking Mr. Powers, Dr. Cho, Mr. Zimmerman, you know, county leadership for working so well with our labor groups, with our physicians, our nurses, our other clinic staffers as we undertake this huge transition and really making sure that everyone maintains that focus on the continuity and the quality of care. It's a huge lift, and I really appreciate everyone's focus on patient care being the number one priority. The one question I had, which I thought wanted to bring up, just to clear, kind of make clear for the public, is that we've heard some of these comments about losses over the past few years. But those losses were were covered with supplemental funding, correct?
That's correct, Supervisor Lavier. So they were largely covered when supplemental funding was taken into account, which put us in a positive position. There were also revisions to the contracts that were done in 2019 that really resulted in some significant increases and improvements as well to about the to tune of about twelve million dollars between fiscal year eighteen nineteen and nineteen twenty. So there were improvements in place, but again, with the supplemental funding, yes, put us in a net positive position.
But that supplemental funding isn't promised moving forward, and that's kind of one of the goals of this whole transition is is building the system that's focused on quality care while also remaining, you know, profitable so that we're not losing money every year, right?
That is absolutely correct. So the funding through the the safety net system for performance based supplemental funding is, again, performance based. So basically, you have to reach a certain benchmark of your performance on quality measures to attain that funding. There are always year over year threats to that funding that it may not exist the following year. So the there's a constant sort of annual nail biting as to whether the waiver will be funded and whether even if it is, if there won't be cuts and significant decreases in the amount of funding that's distributed. And then even with that funding, again, there's that added element of having to show that you're delivering high quality care in order to draw that that funding down.
Yeah, and I and I really appreciate staff's focus. I know that they are very conservative in creating this five year plan, I'll say, of profitability. But I know that from day one, and you said it today, you emphasized today that from day one, we're going to start working on that. And there's a good chance we won't need the full five years. We'll get there sooner than that, and that we're just being conservative. But I really appreciate the approach that this transition is taking as we work towards those goals. So thank you.
And it is also understanding that the way we get repaid, we're reimbursed often, you know, that there is a lag time, too, when the state reimburses us and such. So that also leads to on some deficits to So that also leads to some deficits to, but we do make up for it in, in the future years. I don't know if there's other questions. I'm not seeing any others. So this is a, you know, another one of those really big items. Mr. Powers, you look like you're about ready to say something.
I think we do have a speaker on the end.
Two public speakers.
Okay, let's then go to our public speakers as I don't see any other questions. We, as I understand, Mr. David Grau and then Ms. Rachel Flores. Mr. Grau, if you'd like to unmute yourself and begin, we can hear your presentation.
Two minutes Supervisor Parks.
Yes.
How long would you like to give them?
Three minutes please.
Sure.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good morning. My name is David Grau. I'm the President Ventura County Taxpayer Association. You know, we, we've been following this matter very closely since the December presentation. And I, you know, we, we took a look at it. We also had the opportunity to meet with CEO Powers and Dr. Cho and, and Mr. Zimmerman. And, you know, we, we appreciated that. We think it's a good plan that will achieve the break-even scenario that I think everybody is looking for. And, and as Mr. Foley said in the December presentation, the, the goal is to achieve a break-even without relying on the supplemental payments, which I think is a good goal. The, the only issue we had and have, and I know there's a lot of conservatism built into the budget, which we can appreciate. But I, you know, we kind of looked at, is, is there too much conservatism, you know? Because a lot of the, the systems will be in place by September, I believe, to allow for better productivity on seeing patients. So we were just looking at, okay, well, you, you've got the budget out there. It says five years to achieve it. That, that's an awfully, awfully long time. And I think the goals can be achieved a lot quicker. You know, possibly two, even three years. And, you know, so in, in a way, the budget, the way it's structured kind of sets the bar a little low in our opinion. And, you know, the, the success, you know, is going to be relatively easy to change or to succeed. So from our perspective, we like the plan. We think it's a well-established, well-thought-out. And everything is in place to achieve it. It's just that we had the concern that the five-year rollout or, or period that it's going to take is a little too long. And, and again, you know, we, we, we know there's been tremendous improvements at VCMC over the years and that, that, that whole hospital system is just really improved. And I know it's going to happen at the clinics. But bottom line, we just think there's a little too much conservatism built into the five-year expectation for a break-even. Thank you very much.
I feel like I'd like to quote him on that one, that we're a little too conservative. But I really appreciate the sitting down and, and the discussion with our staff, Mr. Grau, and we do respect your opinion. And our next speaker, I believe, is on the phone and that's Ms. Rachel Flores.
This time Supervisor Parks, Rachel is not on Zoom.
Oh, okay. Yeah, I'm not seeing her shown on our, our list. Sorry that we miss, will miss her comments. But I think at this time, we have exhausted our public comments and our board questions and we have an opportunity now for a motion.
This is Supervisor Long. I would motion to approve this and, and proud to be on the oversight committee and looking forward to just going over this as we normally do to make sure everything runs smoothly.
Supervisor Long has moved the item. Is there a second?
A second.
We have a, a motion and a second. Could we have the roll call?
Supervisor Leveer.
Yes.
Supervisor Long.
Yes.
Supervisor Huber.
Yes.
Supervisor Ramirez.
Yes.
Chair Parks.
Yes. Congratulations on the good work on this and we will be watching it closely and with great expectation. Our, our next item on the
Sorry to interrupt.
Yes.
I'm sorry. I just, one final note is, I just think we touched on it, but one of the strengths of the system truly is the quality of our physicians. And it's been built up over the years and many of them have been with the system for years. And you know, I don't want, I know nobody taking that for granted, but, but we're so fortunate that we're able to have that strength already. If we were trying to build this system, you know, and to hire all these doctors, you just couldn't do it. So it is a big transition. There's a lot of moving parts to be sure and we'll get there as quickly as possible. But we have a big advantage going into this and that is the quality of our physicians and their, their dedication to their patients. Thank you so much. Thank you for your support.
Yes, and thank you for mentioning that too. I mean, just, there's so much to say about our system. You think about residency program, you know,
Right.
in the nation and in thousands of, you know, doctors want to get in onto that residency program and only a few. And then some of them come into our system and become our doctors. And it's just remarkable what we have as well as the partnerships with other institutions. So we get the best and it is an exceptional system on its own. And then it's a public system too, you know, just makes it all the more exceptional. So it's, it's because of the, the great people we have working there and the physicians are, are the lead. So thank you for mentioning that.
Thank you.
Okay, so next we're going to go on to our, our item number thirty-five, I believe. And that's the agenda item regarding our, our SEIU union. And I'll go ahead and turn that over to Tavion Casio or Sean Otten.
And it is a public hearing Supervisor Parks.
Yes, so we will open the public hearing.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we hear you.
Great, thank you. Good morning Chair Parks, members of the board, CEO Powers. My name is Tavion Casio. I'm with the County Executive Office. This agenda item is really a continuation of item number thirty-four that your board just heard. It is a recommendation for your board to hold the public hearing regarding the adoption of amendment number three to the memorandum of agreement between the County of Ventura and the Service Employees International Union, SEIU Local seven two one. And a recommendation for your board to waive a second public hearing that's required under the county's personnel rules and regulations. And finally, at the conclusion of this hearing, to adopt the recommended amendment. As Dr. Cho mentioned, the county is currently engaged in discussions with SEIU on the integration of non-supervisory employees affiliated to clinics. Now, March twenty-third, just a few weeks ago, your board adopted an agreement by which the county and SEIU will set forth the process that will allow six hundred affiliated clinic employees that are represented by SEIU to have the first opportunity to be hired into the new county clinic positions. And at that same meeting on May, March twenty-third, your board also adopted a resolution establishing fifteen new SEIU-represented primary care clinic physicians that will be used in the future state clinic model. And of course, your board just adopted the resolution to establish the six hundred eleven positions. At the March twenty-third meeting, our office informed you that SEIU and the county continue negotiations over amendments to the memorandum of agreement between the parties to address pay issues, benefits and other employment matters related to the primary care clinics. I'm pleased to inform your board today that we have reached agreement with SEIU and are now presenting those amendments to your board for adoption this morning. The agreement on the proposed amendments is the culmination of several months of negotiations between the two parties. It began shortly after the health agency, Dr. Cho, Phil Foley and various other men presented to your board in December planned to restructure the eighteen affiliated privately operated clinics into the structure and leadership under the county ambulatory care system. So these proposed amendments finalize the integration process for the SEIU-represented primary care employees into county employment. It will provide for the establishment of a new bargaining unit for the primary care clinic professional employees. And also contract provisions that will provide for compensation, benefits and other terms and conditions of employment for the new unit employees. The county and SEIU reached agreement on this proposed amendment on March twentieth. And the proposed amendment has included Exhibit One to this board letter. I'll briefly go over the, the salient points of the amendment. First, under Article Three, excuse me. Article Three is revised to establish a new bargaining unit for the primary care clinic professionals that will be comprised of eight new professional classifications that your board approved on March twenty-third, twenty twenty-one. These are nursing-related and advanced practice providers such as a, a primary care nurse practitioner and primary care physician assistants. Second, the amendment provides that the professional unit employees will accrue annual leave as opposed to sick and vacation time. The amendment also establishes compensation elements for the new professional unit. For example, eligible employees will receive up to eighty-four hundred dollars per year for job-relevant professional certifications relevant to their positions. The Dr. Cho spoke to the importance of performance-based and quality metrics being met at the clinics. So the amendment also provides for two performance-based pay incentives for the advanced practice providers. These are the nurse practitioners and physician assistants that are consistent with industry standards in ambulatory care clinics. Advanced practice providers generate revenue for the clinics by seeing patients. The higher volume of patients that you see, the more patient, more revenue is generated for the clinics. But that also needs to be balanced with meetings and quality care incentives. These are state-mandated or state-ensured quality care benchmarks that if they're met also provide additional supplemental funding for the clinics through the, the state's medical program. So the first of these performance-based incentives is a productivity incentive. It will provide a, a performance pay of up to five percent of the employees' base pay for meeting certain productivity benchmarks. The productivity benchmark is balanced against the quality care incentive. So we also want to make sure that the, the providers are the nurse practitioners and physician assistants that are eligible for these incentives. They also need the quality care benchmarks. Some of those quality care benchmarks as an example are child and adult immunizations, diabetes care and controlled heart blood pressure. Those advanced practice providers who meet these benchmarks, quality metrics, will also be eligible to five percent incentive pay of their base pay. There are also several provisions for educational staff development and training. For example, there is a continuing medical education provision of forty hours of paid time and reimbursement allowance of up to two hundred dollar, two thousand dollars for eligible expenses to meet licensure requirements or to enhance their current professional medical skill sets. And we also provide for deferred compensation provisions that are slightly different from regular units. There would be a two percent match, a two percent contribution into the county's 401K deferred compensation plan. But again, these are the most salient points of the agreements. But these amendments are the culmination of several months of complex negotiations between the county and SEIU. And facilitates the timely integration of the six hundred employees into the new county positions. They ensure the continuity of care for over a hundred thousand patients over the county clinics. Before I conclude my comments, I would like to thank the SEIU bargaining team that was led by Leslie Simon, the chief negotiator for the union. She was supported by Danny Carrillo and Aram Daim of SEIU. These were complex matters. There were several matters to, to go over. And Ms. Simon was able to navigate these issues and lead her team to a timely resolution. I'd also like to thank the, the several clinic employees who participated in these discussions. We have licensed vocational nurses at the table, registered nurses, nurse practitioners and physician assistants. They took time from the clinics and also their own personal time to devote to these negotiations. And I would like to thank them profusely for their dedication to these discussions. And also like to thank the county team. Dr. Cho was the subject matter expert. She, she led us through these complex matters. Sean provided a wealth of information on the HR side. Robert Avalo and Mike Kurnow on labor were at the table as well, providing insight. Condolences to Katie McKinney, who I now hand this over to. She is responsible, her team, for hiring all these employees in the next several weeks. So she's going to have her handful. So thank you, Kate, for your help, but good luck with that. The whole here support you when you need it. And of course, Mike Powers and your board, thank you for your, your support and dedication during these negotiations. And with that, I'll conclude my comments, but I'll be available if you have any questions.
Okay, thank you very much for the report. And yeah, you realize what a monumental task that is in bringing them into the system and but also how wonderful that they are already, you know, part of that system is. And that's what Mr. Powers was talking about, the physicians, the same thing with our SEIU folks. Supervisor Ramirez.
Oh, just, I'm so pleased with this for the work and thank you, Tavion. I knew you from your brief time at City of Oxnau where we worked you too hard. But you're back now helping the county with just amazing, amazing work. I wish the public could really get a grasp of how big this is. Thank you so much.
Welcome.
And with that, if there are no other comments or questions, certainly our appreciation to the good work. And, and you think about these bargaining tables, both sides of the table, you know, it, it's long, it's arduous, it's hard. Everyone, as long as we keep our hearts in the right place, we're getting to the place where we need to be. So I'm, I'm so happy for that. And Mr. Powers, did you want to make a comment?
Yes, thank you so much Chair Parks and really in addition to all folks, Tavion committed, committed, committed to being himself because these are very complex. It's not just a labor negotiation. It's also a massive operational transition that has to be negotiated. So the amount of moving parts just goes up exponentially. And his expertise really helped us get there. Danny Carrillo, longtime partnerships, that's the trust that helps you get things done when you need to something as big as this. And then you, you referenced it Chair Parks, the employees. We talk about the physician. But I, I was at La Cisla a few weeks ago and it's true of all the clinics, there's so many employees there who've been there for years, decades. And this is a calling for them. It's not just a job. They really care about the patients they're serving in the community they serve. So another great strength of our system and one of the things is to make sure it's, ensure it's success for the future. Thank you.
Thank you. I think our board is really happy to be able to do this. And with that, do we have a motion?
I'll move it. I'll move the agenda item.
Thank you Supervisor Leveer. Could we please have the roll call?
Just to let you know Supervisor Parks, there are no public comments on this public hearing.
I will close the public hearing too. Thank you.
Supervisor Leveer.
Yes.
Supervisor Long.
Yes.
Supervisor Huber.
Yes.
Supervisor Ramirez.
Yes.
Chair Parks.
Yes, and thank you also to Mr. Carrillo, Ms. Flores. Good work on everyone's part there. Our next item will go to our eleven-thirty time certance. And the first one is a receive and file a budget presentation. We're into that. And so I'll turn it over. This is specifically on the airport. So Mr. Kit Turner. And I believe you'll be starting us off.
I will. Thank you, Madam Chair. And, and good morning to you and to the supervisors and CEO Powers. Thank you for having me.
If I could jump in for just one second, I see you're about to go wheels up here, but before you do, want to just put this in context. So as we talked to your board about a few months ago, I believe, we've asked all the departments to come and do operational budget presentations for you and we're, we're kicking it off. We've already heard from our ISFs, of course, but now we're kicking it off with our Department of Airports. Take it away. Thank you.
Thank you. Next one, please. Let me give you a little bit of a, our, more, more of our community that may be watching this morning, just a little bit of a snapshot of an idea about what our airports truly do for our communities. There, there, as I've said too often, there are two diamonds that are rough that I think exist for our county and this is, is really something to be proud of. And this is really something to be proud of. Both of our airports serve as economic engines supporting our local communities. They both operate under one collective airport enterprise fund. So that means we receive zero tax dollars from the county, the state, or the federal government. They're home to numerous local businesses and public agencies. I believe the last count on that was about sixty nine different businesses are located on the grounds of our airports. The projects that we usually bring to you to do are typically eligible for FAA grants, again, non-tax dollars. Those grants come out of an AIP Airport Improvement Program Fund. That is a user fee based fund that we contribute to. And then we're able to have projects that are eligible to dip back into that pot of money. Our Oxnard Airport is a Part one thirty nine certificated commercial service airport. So when our county decides it wants to go back into the airline business, we have an airport that has the infrastructure and capability and the certification ability to do so. And that'll be something we talk about as we are in our master plan study that we'll talk about a little later in this presentation. Both of our airports include control towers. And from a guy that's been in the aviation industry since nineteen eighty five, I can tell you that's a huge asset of its own. Because a lot of airports nationwide, including commercial airports with vital active air service, oftentimes do not have control towers. So we're very well established in our infrastructure. Next slide, please. I'm sorry. Yeah, there we go. Well, try it one more time. Both of our airports, as I mentioned a moment ago, are economic engines to our community. So you can see here collectively, they contribute right now on an annual basis over two hundred and eighty million dollars towards the economy of our of our local economies every year. I sort of touched on a minute ago, the airport's infrastructure abilities, but also how they work in the air system is huge. For example, Camarillo is a national reliever airport. There's not a lot of those. So having that status for Camarillo is an outstanding opportunity for Camarillo. And then I did touch on how the Oxnard Airport is a commercial airport, but also serves general aviation, business aviation role, providing access points all over the nation. Next slide. As I mentioned earlier, the economic engines that they are and the way they produce to our economy equates to over two hundred and eighty million. So if you break that out a little bit in the current status of our airports, you could see here that the Camarillo Airport right now contributes a little over two hundred and thirty million a year to our local economy, excuse me. Whereas the Oxnard Airport is currently contributing a little over fifty one million. This study is a nineteen, twenty nineteen study. I can tell you those numbers have grown since then, so it's that or better at this point. And then also just to touch on the difference there, but the Oxnard Airport, once if we do decide to go back into airline service and have that back, that number will easily catch up with the Camarillo number and far surpass it with airline service. That's what it would do to our economy if we decided to go that route. As you can see, the current airports employ over two thousand people on the airports in some capacity with payrolls of over a hundred and thirty five million dollars collective to our community. Next slide. Not only do we provide to our economy in many ways that I've already touched on, but we also actually contribute to the state and the local tax coffers. We contribute to, we don't take from. So you could see here that the Camarillo Airport is around an eleven million dollar contributor every year. The Oxnard Airport a little over two. So collectively, we're around a little over thirteen million that we contribute to our local tax coffers that help fund schools, emergency services, road maintenance and health services. And then that bottom portion of the slide there gives you a little bit of an idea of just the capacity of operational ability that we currently do. Where we are over two hundred and twenty something thousand operations collective, annual operations a year. That's impressive. A lot of, a lot of airports are happy to see twenty to thirty thousand operations a year, and we're well over two hundred and twenty thousand collectively. And we're basing over five hundred aircraft at our two airports now, in addition to all of the other tenants that we have. Next slide. Little bit about how transparent we are in the public eye, if you will. And a little bit about how things ultimately lead up to being in front of you today like this budget presentation. So we have staff and stakeholder input, obviously. And before we bring something to the Board of Supervisors, we have a multitude of parties that play into and give advisement, primarily back to you as supervisors. And that includes an Aviation Advisory Commission. That commission is made up of two public members that each of you appoint for your districts. That's a total of ten people there that serve in that capacity. And then we have two different airport authorities, one for Oxnard and one for Camarillo. The makeup on that is the two city council members for each, two county supervisor members, and one public member appointed by the elected members. And then again, there's two of those. So that creates a total of another ten, ten or so folks there involved. Everything we bring to the Board of Supervisors has also not only gone through those processes, but it has also received a review and input from the county CEO's office, the county council, and the county auditor controller. And then ultimately, things land in front of you at the Board of Supervisors for policy and adoption. Depending on those items, it might require either three fifths or four fifths of a vote. Next slide. The county airports also support our emergency response personnel in multiple ways. This is just a couple of pictures here giving you a brief illustration how the airports play into our system of emergency response. We have a wonderful, outstanding, actually one of the best I've ever seen Ventura County Sheriff Air units located on our Camarillo Airport. They have a large fleet of aircraft, very sharp personnel and pilots. We also support CAL FIRE for all the fires, like the Thomas Fire and all the other fires that you're unfortunately so familiar with. Our infrastructure and our ability to support those services puts those emergency response folks right in our back door when we need them. And that's a good thing for our community. We do things like multiple air ambulances and things of that nature. So we really support our emergency response in a multitude of ways. Next slide. Looking into the budget numbers a little bit, which is why we're here today. I wanted to first touch on the current budget we're in and what drove the, what drove us into the ability to, or not the ability, but what drove us to the point of the current budget and how we're operating based on the things that are going on in our county and our world right now. Excuse me. Is the current budget for fiscal year twenty twenty one, the one we're in, we obviously, like everyone else, we adopted, adapted to the COVID nineteen pandemic. This started hitting our county, as I recall, about around March seventeenth of twenty twenty, just before this current budget that we're in right now was being proposed and being implemented. We had already proposed a different kind of budget for this current fiscal year prior to that. But when COVID brought itself to our county in the fashion that it did and requirements that it did, we immediately revamped that entire budget and ended up with something similar to what I'm touching on now, which is what we're operating on today. So one of the things we did right off the bat is we implemented a zero based budget and for the current fiscal year. We prepared for reduced scenarios, revenue scenarios of five, ten, fifteen, and even twenty and twenty five percent. We, the Department of Airports, I believe, was one of the first departments in the county to initiate a temporary hiring freeze on all of the open positions that existed at the time. We reduced all of our nonessential costs at all levels, deferred all of our nonessential projects. We reevaluated all of our capital projects, including those that were being partnershiped with on FAA funding. We approved a rent deferment option for our tenants for the months of April and May. We didn't see a need to come back to you and get another approval beyond that because we actually started seeing our airports get back to positive numbers again at that timeframe. So we were blessed in that regard that the airports continued or actually had only a small, minor adjustment there. And then we actually started growing again. Throughout the entire time since day one, we've had staff assigned to assist with the county disaster recovery efforts. And we still to this day have at least two personnel assigned to that. And that sounds like it may not be a lot, but when you have a total of thirty four full time employee positions operating two very critical pieces of infrastructure in our airports like we have, and you got about four of those positions open that had a temporary hiring freeze on, two adds up to be a lot. But we're proud of the fact that we've been able to play a part in that role. The department immediately went to work on trying to keep the ability to maintain our essential staff safe and healthy. So we had a few folks that were, their jobs allowed them to be able to telework. So we implemented that, as did the rest of the county departments for those that could. And then we invested immediately as a department into a lot of remote meeting equipment, which allowed us to continue having our monthly advisory board meetings with those different bodies that I mentioned to you a moment ago. Just to give you a snapshot of our, of our hours and cost allocated to the COVID pandemic effort thus far, we're looking at about a little over thirty six hundred hours at a cost to the airport. Department of Airports around one hundred and fifty four, fifty five thousand. Next slide. With all that being said, a couple of the highlights that I want to touch on is the fact that we've been able to actually see our numbers start growing again, even with the short setback that we, that I talked about a moment ago. And it allowed us to go ahead and continue with some other things that we had already in the works. For example, we're excited about our Oxnard runway, taxiway and taxiway connectors project. It's going to be roughly about a twenty six and a half million dollar project. We were able to this year in this fiscal year, complete the design for all three components of that work. If they, so we're ready for all three of those components of work if we're able to move forward at one time for those three. And we're actually out to bid right now to better answer that question. So we'll be back to you on that more soon. Another thing we're excited about on this particular project is we were able to maintain our category D three runway at Oxnard. A couple of years ago, the alignment for that airport was to have a reduced runway. And a reduced runway would have meant a reduced category and not as wide a runway as we have now. But we didn't want to settle for that. We, we went back to the FAA and we did a series of meetings with the FAA over a period of several months. And we were able to justify and convince the FAA to continue partnering with us on maintaining this current infrastructure that we have today, which is hugely important because it's so hard to get new infrastructure back, particularly for category style for runways in your community. So that allowed us to get full partnership from the FAA for maintaining our category D three runway instead of a lesser category. And it allowed us to maintain our full width runway funding. During the course of the design over this year, we've hosted, or will have hosted, three public workshops. Two of those have been completed. We've got one more looming in May, just prior to construction, where we received lots of vital feedback from our tenant base, from our stakeholders, and from all the public that's interested in the runway project in whatever regard. It's a great avenue for that. One of the things that we heard a lot of concern about was during the four months that the runway is closed for the reconstruction is some of the tenants had concerns about, you know, the fact that they may have to, you know, do things on a temporary basis to relocate their aircraft. And it has some costs. So we came to you a few months back, you may recall, and we got permission from you to offer an approved rent relief for those Oxnard tenants during that four months of construction. So we're excited about that. We do have an anticipated start of construction at the end of June of this year. The grants are anticipated to come in in May. And obviously, the grants drive the timing of the project, but we anticipate the grants in May with the start of late June. Another very positive aspect or project or item that we had happen in this current fiscal year is the Airport Master and System Plan Study that I'm going to touch on with you a little bit before the end of the presentation here. This was an item that was not in our capital improvement program list at all. But we quickly realized the need to, to try to do this and to try to figure out what the real future of our airports look like for the next ten, fifteen years. So we went to the FAA to try to get partnership on this. And we were actually very blessed that the FAA joined us, not only in partnership, but they fully funded it. So it's fully funded at seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And this was an item that we, again, did not even have in the works. So we're very excited about that. That kicked off in November, mid-November, and I'll be again touching on it again before we get through here. During the current fiscal year, because things did bounce out for us pretty well on the operations, we were able to go ahead and invest a little bit in our terminal and infrastructure improvements at Oxnard. And we're excited about that. Did several little things like some stuff on the air, on the runways where some new striping went down, resealed parking lots and restriped parking lots, painted the inside of the terminal, opened up two offices over there, one for the director, a satellite office for the director and a satellite office for the deputy director. We now, we now position senior leadership at the Oxnard Airport five days a week before that was not the case. And we also have refilled, even this was prior to COVID, but we refilled the supervisor position over there too. So we have a lot stronger presence in the Oxnard Airport than what we were doing prior. And then finally, at the, another highlight for this current fiscal year is we completed the Northeast Hangar Project that we had started back in twenty seventeen for the Camarillo Airport, opening up forty one new hangars for our tenant base at the Camarillo Airport. Next slide, please. Excuse me. And then the final highlight for this current fiscal year, with all of that being said, and our conservative approach to the bit, to the fiscal budget, as I talked to you about a couple of slides ago, we're tracking right now through March of thirty first, we're tracking right now to have a net operating gain at the end of the fiscal year of a little over one point nine million. Next slide, please. And now to talk about our, our focus on the new budget this next fiscal year. Because COVID is still hitting our county and our country, and we don't know what the, the end result's going to be. I don't think any of us do. We all have hopes and prayers that it's going to continue to be a trend that we're seeing now. Thanks to our county leadership, we've done some really good things to take care of our county residents and that kind of thing. But we, we don't know the answers of how things are going to be playing out. And so we're still taking a very conservative approach. So for this budget that we're proposing to you today, we maintained a zero based approach. We went back to that again this year. We also maintained the ability, if we were to see that we need to because of some kind of change in our current trend, to implement a reduced revenue scenarios of ten to fifteen percent if necessary. We, we know we can accommodate that if it comes to that. We have our cash reserves in place for any of the planned projects we're talking to you about. And we're really only focused on the planned projects that have FAA shared costs. So we really feel good about that. Even though I can easily come to you and justify new FTE positions, we're not doing so. We have a lot of work that is going on at our two airports. And we could easily justify coming to you and asking for four or five of those new positions to happen. But we've decided not to do that this year. We are going to go ahead and fill some of our open positions that we put a freeze on this past year. And then also, our new budget is including the waived rents, the anticipated waived rents for the Oxnard tenants during the four months of construction that I mentioned a moment ago that we came to you and got permission to consider and approve. And so the budget has that, has that factored in. And then we're taking another year where we had deferred, we're deferring for a second year in a row, planned increase rates for another year for our rent and fee schedule. We did the same thing last year, and the rent and fee is obviously something we come back to you in a little later time and talk about. But just so you know, our budget factors in, no new rent and fees for the next year. Next slide, please. And so this is a snapshot of what our budget looks like for this year. You'll see compared in the first column for the new proposed budget, compared in the second column to the existing current budget that I've talked about today. The appropriations we have at six point seven million, a little over, versus actually last year's appropriations at seven point eight million. So we actually have cut back our expenses even more this year in a conservative approach. And we've maintained the same, relatively the same revenues, really the only increase in revenues you're seeing here that we're factoring into the proposed budget. Again, with a very conservative approach here because of all the unknowns of the pandemic, really those increased revenues are really based on the fact that we picked up some new tenants during the course of this, this past fiscal year. So it equates to the income we have now. So we're projecting another gain, even if it's a conservative approach, even with the projects and things that we're doing of almost a million dollars, a little over nine hundred thousand dollars. Next slide, please. This is just a snapshot, just to show you the diversity of how our revenues are combined by source. And I can tell you for an airport, this is exciting to see. A lot of times airports do not have this type of diversity of revenue. So this is a very, very positive thing for our airports and just a snapshot there giving you an illustration of that. Next slide, please. And a similar, a similar snapshot of how appropriations are spent by source. As you can see, they're pretty spread out over different pieces of the pie there, which is a good diversity as well in that. Next slide. We'll talk to you a little bit about how our airport projects are funded. So the sources of capital funding for the projects that we are doing, like the runway project and the master plan that I've already touched on. So for our AIP Airport Improvement Program funding, again, that's a source of money that's non-tax based. User fee contributed by airports all over the country. The FAA contributes up to ninety percent of the projects that are qualified and deemed justified for those type projects. State air audits contributes up to four point five percent in matching fundings. State Aeronautics contributes up to four point five percent in matching fundings. And again, that's a similar type pot of money, non-tax funded. It's uh, it's fuel user-based. Um, so it's user fees put into that, and we were able to get those back out. I can tell you that we don't typically get that much from the State Aeronautics Bureau here. Usually they cap their grants around a hundred and fifty thousand. For our non-grat bu, uh, non-grat uh, projects that we do, which we don't have many of this year, as I've already mentioned, but when we do them, uh, we do those through capital budget appropriations from our reserves. Again, an Airport Enterprise Fund, uh, no other sources coming in there. We plan and save for those projects like any business would do. Uh, and then the Q Business Park is an association of tenants, if you will, that play into some infrastructure improvements for the business park. And then we always have private investment as well going on simultaneous to anything the county's doing uh, from different types of investment uh, that may be going into our airports for private investment funds. Next slide, please. Uh, just a quick snapshot here of what our capital projects are looking like that we're proposing for the next fiscal year for the Camarillo Airport. We already realized that that airport is going to have to have the runway reconstructed in uh, twenty twenty five. So we're now doing the preliminary work to get ready for that. Uh, so this year's efforts towards that will include the uh, twenty five percent conceptual design and all of the environmental work. Uh, and then we've got some uh, some pavement issues on some of our taxiways that I've mentioned here uh, that I've pointed out that we're doing some maintenance repair type projects on. So you'll see at the bottom there, the total for the Camarillo capital projects that we're doing this year come out to around six hundred eighty uh, three thousand and some change. We anticipate AIP uh, grant allotments for about six hundred eight thousand of that, leaving a net cost out of camera, out of, out of the Department of Airports Enterprise Reserve Fund of about seventy five thousand. Next slide, please. And then we roll into the Oxnard Airport. I've already touched on this one pretty significantly, but the uh, runway project obviously is the bigger item there. We've got three different components of work that total up to about a little over twenty six and a half million on that. It's not known at this time how the bids will come in and how the grants will come in on that. So it is possible that uh, two or three of those, uh, two of those three components could be bid out or could have to be funded at a later year. Uh, but there is the possibility and we, the, the desire would be to have them all three done in one swing of the bat. But so we've got them factored in here in case we get lucky enough to do that. Uh, I got a couple of little maintenance projects uh, factored into there that just can't wait. Uh, so we have a total for about twenty six, almost twenty seven million uh, in projects that we uh, have uh, allotted here for the Oxnard Airport for this, this fiscal year, this next fiscal year. As you can see there, after you add factor in the grants that would come with us, uh, come with that, we're, we're getting some really nice new infrastructure for our county at a very small price out of airport pockets there of two point three million. So uh, it's always exciting to talk about those things when you get, when you get all, all kinds of new infrastructure and it doesn't, it doesn't cost uh, near the price tag out of our personal, you know, out of our, out of our airport fund is uh, to fund all that. Next slide, please. I mentioned this a moment ago, the Q, the Camarillo Road and Lighting is the Business Park at Camarillo. Uh, this is just giving you a snapshot of what they do and our share to that. Next slide, please. And you can see we've got a couple of maintenance projects factored into that for this year. And we do something like this every year on the Business Park area there, just to keep the runways and the lighting and that kind of thing up to date. Next slide, please. And now I'd like to just uh, give you a little bit of a snapshot about the Master Plan and System Plan Study that we're doing. This is so important for our county. I cannot even begin to tell you. Um, I really am excited about this study. Um, it's really going to give us the true vision that we need for our two airports going forward, for you as leaders in our county to make decisions based off of and, and for us as staff to be able to know what the playbook is for, for taking next steps. Um, so what this is, is it's a comprehensive, long-range study of how our two airports work into our county system and how they work collaboratively together for our air transportation needs for the county and how they contribute going forward as economic engines like they're doing today. But how else can they do that and what that looks like going forward? Next slide, please. Um, it gives us yet another opportunity to engage with and educate the general public on issues related to our airports. Uh, as I mentioned, it provides vision and guidance uh, for our future development of our airports. It offers justification to the FAA for any projects that we were to plan coming out of this study. And the process itself includes four public workshops held at uh, key milestones throughout the project to solicit feedback from county residents, airport stakeholders. Uh, and in addition, by the way, to those four workshops, we're going to have both an English and Spanish-speaking language uh, website setup uh, for continual feedback. We're going to be doing many, many, many different presentations to the advisory bodies that I've already mentioned to you earlier in the presentation and uh, and even to your, your board as well throughout the process. Uh, so there's all types of opportunities for participation, which is what this study really is, is, is thrives upon. Uh, the study also includes and considers uh, environmental and socioeconomic impacts from anything that's being discussed in the study uh, to see how it affects our county if we were to move in certain directions on different things. And it's a very, very transparent and collaborative process. Next slide, please. And at the end of the day, uh, we conclude with a local document that will then come back to your board uh, to be presented for approval to uh, the Ventura County Board of Supervisors and adoption, if, if you will, or, or, or modification or whatever the case may be at the time. Uh, the FAA does approve the aviation demand forecast and the airport layout plan drawing set. There are elements of that study, and what that does is it sort of establishes some rails, if you will, so that we uh, I say we, staff is not actually conducting the study. We have a third party doing this, Kaufman and Associates, uh, for the mere reason of making sure it's truly a study that uh, is based on need and based on feedback from the constituency of the county. Uh, but the FAA's guide rails keep it, keep it in check, if you will, somewhat in the fact that it makes sure it's uh, it's, it's being guided in a process that makes sense. And I think that's it, but next slide, just to make sure. Uh, one more maybe? Okay, that is it. Yeah, so uh, that's the end of our presentation, and I'm happy to take any questions on the budget or the airports or anything we're doing. So floor is back to you, and thank you for the presentation.
Great. Thank you for the thorough presentation. Uh, supervisors, do you have any uh, questions or comments on the presentation? Supervisor Long, I see your hand up.
Thank you very much, and just wanted to reiterate, I appreciate Kip and all of staff putting this budget together. I know that Supervisor Ramirez and I are both on the Airport Authority for the Camarillo Airport and also the Oxnard Airport, and that this budget was approved by both of those and the airport commission. Uh, want to make sure that our board members know that you had already seen, said that. Um, and there's some really great opportunities coming to the airport um, with the runways and making sure that they're as, they're going to last, you know, twenty, thirty years or even longer. Um, again, once in a lifetime things, it seems that our board is doing um, for the, the good of the community. So I appreciate that. Um, I do know that we have the hangar leases that we are talking about. If that's not an item, but in case community members are wondering about that, we are working on that still, and that'll be coming to our airport authority meetings. Um, and then there was also one other thing. Um, no, I just really appreciate the update. Uh, there's just a lot of good things going on. So thank you.
Thank you, and uh, thanks for serving on that. And along with Supervisor Ramirez, you have comments too?
Yes, just very briefly, uh, thank you, Mr. Turner, for your comprehensive report here. I always want to emphasize that a lot of people uh, in Oxnard, in my district in particular, should be able to participate in this planning, this visioning, understanding what is at stake. Um, I do hear from people who really could use more information, so I'm hoping we have a very robust public outreach for the master plan, uh, for the thinking about it. Sometimes um, it, it takes a lot of resources and energy to respond to issues that uh, the neighbors of the airport have. And I, I spend a lot of time listening and talking to people with that. So it's going to be really important to have people understand how important the airport is and address any concerns that uh, the surrounding communities have and the business community needs. So thank you very much, and, and thank you Supervisor Long for being there with me, uh, helping, helping everybody understand what's at stake here. Thank you.
Thank you. And um, not seeing any other questions, would you like to make a motion?
Supervisor Long, a motion to approve, receiving fire.
I'll second it. Supervisor Long moved the motion and seconded by Supervisor Ramirez. If we could please have the roll call.
Supervisor Laver.
Yes.
Supervisor Long.
Yes.
Supervisor Huber.
Yes.
Supervisor Ramirez.
Yes.
Chair Parks.
Yes, great work, Mr. Turner. Thank you again for the presentation, and thank you supervisors. Uh, so at this time, I believe uh, we could go to closed session. Does that sound right? And then uh, be back at one thirty for our Air Pollution Control District Meeting and then two thirty for our Board of Supervisors time certain. Unless I hear otherwise, uh, we will go to our closed session, be back for the Board of Supervisors beginning at two thirty. Thank you.
To the restroom.
You're live.
Hello, good afternoon. Uh, we're back to our Ventura County Board of Supervisors of April thirteenth, twenty twenty one. And we're at that uh, time of two thirty time certain. And this item is item thirty seven, and it relates to a couple of ordinances in our county. Uh, one that I was very involved in getting to move forward, which is a rooster, rooster keeping regulation. Um, and this is making some revisions to that as well as uh, one on setbacks on pools. And um, rooster keeping became quite a problem when we were finding residents disturbed by hundreds, if not kept, and oftentimes that is uh, done for cockfighting. So that was an important uh, regulation to finally get on the books after quite some time, as I understand it. Uh, so right now I'm going to turn it over uh, to uh, Freya. Oh, you'll be doing this, Rosengrin?
Yes. Hi, good afternoon, Chair Parks, members of the Board of Supervisors, and CEO Mike Powers. My name is Freya Rosengrin. I'm the case planner with the County Planning Division for the project for, for you today, which is um, PL twenty dash zero one four one. These are text amendments to the non-cosozoning ordinance. I'm going to share the screen now.
Yeah, well, the public here, so thank you.
Okay, just one moment. So a quick overview of today's presentation includes a list of the ordinance amendments, the background and discussion of each of the amendments, the planning commission recommendation, the findings and supporting evidence, environmental review, and lastly, the recommended actions. There are two types of amendments before you today, amendments directed by the Board of Supervisors and those directed by the Planning Director. The board-directed amendments include revising the existing rooster keeping regulations in the non-cosozoning ordinance so that they are consistent with the recently board-adopted um, ordinance, rooster keeping regulations, ordinance number forty five thirty five in chapter four of division four. And the proposed amendments directed by the Planning Director include revising the time period for effectuating zoning clearances.
Anything new, Joel?
And revising the setback requirements for in-ground swimming pools, spas, and similar in-ground structures. The proposed amendments, um, if adopted by your board, would affect all properties located in the non-cosozone zones in the unincorporated Ventura County. The first set of proposed amendments are related to the county's rooster keeping regulations. In two thousand and eighteen, as Chair Parks mentioned, the board adopted a county-wide ordinance regulating the keeping of roosters. In summary, this ordinance limits the number of roosters allowed on a property to a maximum of four and includes a set of best management practices that assist in preventing uh, the inhumane treatment of roosters and protects the health and safety of the citizens of Ventura County. The board directed staff to revise the county zoning ordinances to conform to the Ventura County um, county-wide rooster keeping ordinance. This includes adding new definitions to Article Two, adding entirely new set of rooster keeping provisions to Article Seven. That includes a four-rooster limit, and as I said before, best management practices such as providing adequate shelter and water and prohibiting the tethering of roosters. Additionally, minor changes are proposed to Article Thirteen to clarify that owners of roosters were required to come into compliance with the county's rooster keeping regulations as of March eleventh, two thousand nineteen, which was three months after the adoption of the ordinance forty five thirty five. Um, consistent with the county-wide ordinance, the proposed rooster keeping regulations and the non-cosozoning ordinance um, would not be applicable to commercial poultry ranches, public or private schools, nonprofit humane organization animal facilities, which is also a defined um, term in our ordinance, and count, and to the county of Ventura. Additionally, um, for rooster youth projects like for H or for legitimate poultry hobbyists, um, they would also not be, um, the four limit, rooster limit would not apply to those types of uses as well. And if they would like to have up to five to twenty five, they would be able to do that with a zoning clearance um, waiver process. And the waiver process requires the applicant to obtain signed waivers from surrounding property owners and or residents of the property owner who requests to keep more roosters in, allowed in a certain zone, specifically for four H or as a legitimate hobby. Um, they would also need to get um, approval and writing from the Director of Animal Services. The next topic is the expiration date of zoning clearances. Currently, building permit applications and zoning clearances are not submitted and approved at the same time, causing a discrepancy between the two expiration dates to assure a project qualifies for zoning clearance and the applicant does not spend money on unnecessary engineering. The Building and Safety Division requires that a zoning clearance be issued first and then submitted with the building permit application. Uh, the ordinance currently requires that a zoning clearance is valid for a hundred and eighty days unless a building permit is issued and construction has commenced. And the building permit application review phase is valid for three hundred and sixty days. When a zoning clearance expires, while, while it is still in the building permit application review phase, a new zoning clearance is required in order to continue the building permit application review phase. This causes processing delays and costs for the applicant and unnecessary use of county resources. So to resolve this issue, the Planning Director recommends that the time period for effectuating zoning clearances be aligned and run concurrently with the related building permit application. Staff proposes two processes to address this issue, one for when a building permit is required and one for when a building permit is not required. The proposed process for when a building permit is required is um, looks like this. Um, a hundred and eighty days after zoning clearance is issued, um, the applicant must submit for a building permit. Then from the date of the submittal of the building permit, the applicant has three hundred and sixty days to satisfy the requirements to obtain a building permit. The zoning clearance would be considered expired and a new zoning clearance required if one, the applicant does not submit the building permit application within a hundred and eighty days of issuance of the zoning clearance, or they don't qualify for an extension to the zoning clearance. The second reason is if there's a design change during the building permit application review period, they need to come back to the Planning Division and obtain a new zoning clearance. Or if the building permit is not issued within three hundred and sixty days, they would have to go back and to the Planning Division and again, get a new zoning clearance. Um, the process for when a building permit is not required is the same process that currently exists. From the date of issuance, the applicant has a hundred and eighty days to obtain any other required any other required licenses or entitlements and commence or inaugurate the use within a hundred and eighty days. If it's not commenced within a hundred and eighty days, then the zoning clearance expires and a new zoning clearance is required. So these proposed amendments would improve customer service, minimize processing times, assist in streamlining the building permit and the planning process, and minimizes the amount of county resources dedicated to reviewing these projects. The ordinance also does not have a process in place for extending the life of a zoning clearance and the planning director recommends including a process to allow one extension of a hundred and eighty days if there are no design or ordinance changes. If there are any design or ordinance changes during that one hundred and eighty day period, then their zoning clearance is null and void and they would need to come back and get a new zoning clearance. Lastly, with this topic, the planning director recommends clarifying in the ordinance that the portion of a zoning clearance's structures and or development that receives a finalized building permit shall only authorize and be effective as to those specific structures and or development. For example, if an applicant received a zoning clearance to allow the construction of three structures circled on the plan, but only two of those structures receive a final building permit from the Building and Safety Division, only those structures are authorized, are considered authorized and effective. The other structure that did not get built and receive a final sign-off would need to go back through the planning process with the zoning clearance and then back through the building permit process. The next topic is the proposal to revise the setback requirements for in-ground pools and spas and similar in-ground structures. The current ordinance requires six-foot setback for pools and spas that have a depth greater than eighteen inches. The proposed amendment would allow a three-foot setback between structures for these type of in-ground structures. The planning division has received complaints from property owners and pool contractors that the six-foot separation between pools and spas from other structures is an unnecessary setback, not justified by health and safety concerns. And planning staff recommends that the setback now be a three-foot setback. We discussed, the planning division discussed this with the Building and Safety Division and they deem that it would be sufficient to serve the purpose of a setback requirement and would be adequately and would be adequate to provide a foundation design if it's justified by a state licensed engineer. So the setback reduction would continue to allow adequate space between the structures in case of emergencies, allow for efficient use of backyard space, and if engineered properly, would not weaken the foundation of the adjacent structures. The six-foot separation requirement would still be required for above-ground pools and spas and any above-ground accessory structures part of the pool, such as a gazebo or shade structure. These text amendments were reviewed by the Planning Commission on March fourth, twenty twenty-one. There was a unanimous vote for a recommendation of approval of the ordinance amendments. The project is subject to environmental review through the California Environmental Quality Act and has been found to be exempt pursuant to sections one five three oh seven and one five three oh eight, which states in part that a project is exempt from CEQA when actions are taken by regulatory agencies to protect natural resources and the environment. Additionally, the project is exempt pursuant to section one five oh six one B three since there's no possibility that the activity may have a significant effect on the environment. The board must make certain findings in order to amend the ordinance. In section C of the Planning Commission's staff report, that's exhibit one, staff provided evidence that shows that all the required findings can be made. The public notice and a summary of the proposed amendments were advertised in the Ventura County Star, All County Wide Editions, the Ojai Valley Newspaper, and the Mountain Enterprise on April second, two thousand and twenty-one, and also a Spanish version was published in Vida newspaper. We also posted it on the bulletin board outside the government center on the board's agenda and emailed it to interested persons. So based upon the analysis and information provided in the Planning Commission's staff report and the board letter and during this presentation, staff recommends that your board take the following five actions. These actions are also shown on page one of the board letter. And this concludes the staff's presentation. If you have any questions, staff's available to answer them. Thank you.
Thank you for that presentation. Let's see, do any of the supervisors have any questions on this? They look like very reasonable suggestions and to make a processing easier on certainly the second one, too.
Supervisor Long, I would just like to say thank you to staff for looking at ways where we can make the process better for our constituents and make it more, more practical sense, it seems like to me, what you've brought together and I do really appreciate that.
Yeah, we know time is money and having to go back through the process again to do another zoning amendment is difficult. So Supervisor Ramirez, you had a question?
No, I didn't. Thank you very much for the work. Comprehensive.
Thank you. Okay, with that, do we have a motion?
Do we have public comment at all?
And I'm sorry, no, I didn't. I didn't see any public comment speakers, but I do have to close the public hearing. Is that correct, Sir of our Board?
It is correct. No public speakers on this item.
Ms. Supervisor Long, I would motion to approve as recommended.
We have a second from Supervisor Laver, I believe.
Yes.
With that, can we please have the roll call?
Supervisor Laver.
Yes.
Supervisor Long.
Yes.
Supervisor Huber.
Yes.
Supervisor Ramirez.
Yes.
Chair Parks.
Yes, thank you. And again, thanks to staff for this. So, yes, thank you. We actually can't start our three fifteen time certain quite yet. So we've got nine minutes. Shall we come back then and take a short recess?
Again, my predecessor, Supervisor Steve Bennett, for recognizing the ever-increasing problem with RVs parked on the North Ventura Avenue and for working towards a creative solution. And I also want to thank several of my colleagues who were on the board last year, Supervisors Parks, Long, and Huber for supporting this attempt. It would have been really simple just to place no parking signs up and down the avenue, but that would not have addressed the root problems. And in reality, that just would have caused these RVs to flow into neighboring communities and local neighborhoods. But instead, this pilot program took really a comprehensive approach within a limited time period to provide critical services to those in need and really tries to provide a long-term solutions to these individuals. And I'm here today both excited to report some significant progress, but also to recognize the further work needed. So if you can go to the next slide. And then the next slide, please. Great, thank you. Yeah, there's three things I hope to accomplish today. I want to start by just providing a quick overview and a status update as we approach the halfway point of this program. It's a one-year pilot program that was adopted in December twenty twenty. I'm sorry, November twenty twenty. And I'm going to ask that we slightly amend the program, the implementing ordinance, to remove one of the two current overnight parking zones, given the reduction we've seen in the RVs and really to more effectively provide services and enforcement in the program. And then lastly, recognizing that this is a regional, even a statewide issue and not simply limited to District One. I'm going to ask that we direct county staff to coordinate with the continuum of care and regional partners to bring forward recommendations to this board on potential regional approaches and best practices for the services needed and other issues related to vehicle encampments, starting with
Supervisor Laver, I'm sorry, I did want to point out that we have opened our public hearing, so that's part of the records. I'm sorry to interrupt you. Please proceed.
No problem. Thank you, Madam Chair. And just a brief history, this is ordinance number four, five, six, nine, which became effective December nine, twenty twenty. It's a one-year RV pilot program in specific areas of the North Ventura Avenue, Crooked Palm, Canyota Larga, and Casitas Vista, designed for the RV population at that time. And it's important to say, because this program was not designed for new permities or participants after the program inception. This was specifically designed for those individuals already living in their RVs on the North Ventura Avenue. And one example of this is just yesterday morning, two RVs full of surfers from Michigan showed up to park for a week and surf and they were promptly removed as they weren't part of the permitted program. This program requires participants to engage with homeless services to work on permanent housing solutions and other necessary services. This really is a hand-up, not a hand-out approach, something I'm a huge fan of and I know that this board supports. And the goal is to get individuals, whatever assistance they need, to get off the streets and ideally into permanent housing. There's a required weekly movement of the RVs between the two current overnight parking zones. Weekly services are provided to participants via a one-stop location. In there, there's a shower pod, a mobile medical services and caseworkers, and each participant is required on a monthly basis to renew their permit. And if a participant does not meet these requirements, they are removed from the program and no longer able to park in these zones. You can go to the next slide, please. And the current happenings, a big concern, which I know many of us heard prior to the implementation of this program, involved trash buildup and other environmental concerns, given threats to illegal dumping in the nearby Ventura River. And this program really addressed those needs by providing additional portable toilets, additional dumpsters, and by providing weekly pump-out services to those individuals in the program to ensure that gray water and other waste isn't illegally dumped into the river. It also requires monthly check-ins so that these individual participants can really receive the most effective services. And we really have seen measurable and visible results. As you can see right there, we've seen already in these first nearly five months, a fifty percent drop in the permities, which shows that people are either finding long-term solutions or leaving the area. I'm going to share some of those success stories in a later screen, but given these successes and in consultation with the caseworkers and then local sheriff's deputies, we all agreed at this time it's appropriate to shrink the program by removing the Crooked Palm overnight parking area and limiting this program now to just one overnight zone on the North Ventura Avenue. The reason being is by limiting the program in this way, we really can more effectively provide some of the more chronic services that we need to provide right now in a single concentrated zone. Many of the individuals in this program who were able and amenable to getting our help have been provided that help and have been moved on. And now it's time to really focus on some of the people that have been more hesitant. And we, given the timeline on this program, we want to spend the next seven months really focused on these individuals. If you go to the next slide. Here's some pictures that show some of the dumpsters we've put out, the porta-potties. The bottom picture, you'll see some of the pump-out services that we're providing. I really want to thank Kelly's Affordable Portables, what a great name, and EJ Harrison, both who have really been great partners in our collective efforts to make this program a success. Go to the next slide, please. Here's a picture of our weekly one-stop. On the right-hand side of the screen, you can see the mobile showers. You can see on the left side of the screen the mobile medical clinic. And then you'll see those individuals who are lined up to renew their permits and to speak with case workers. Next slide, please. There's a picture of a close-up of the shower pod and some of the casework being done. At this time, you know, not only are showers and healthcare and caseworkers provided, but also there's meals provided for individuals in the program. And the individuals working this on a weekly basis have shown just such deep care and concern for the individuals they are working with. We're going to look at some of these success stories, but many of the individuals working on this have been great. I really want to call out two of those women. One is Maria Garcia Sabalos and the other is Raylene Cox. They are both out there on a weekly basis with just constant smiles and positive attitudes. And they've just made this program really what it is in terms of its successes. They've been crucial to that. Their attitude, their positive attitudes, and their willingness to really jump in and help. And so I just really want to thank Raylene and Maria for all of the work they've been doing this past year. If you want the next slide, please. That is just a close-up of some, obviously, the mobile medical clinic. For those of you who've been able to tour this clinic, it's really a doctor's office on wheels and many of the individuals in this program require medical help and they've been getting that on a weekly basis. So that's a big success of this program. Next slide, please. And there's three specific successes I want to call out. One was a group of nine RVs who were all living together on the North Ventura Avenue and through casework and the assistance of so many, we were able to identify a tiny home enclave in San Luis Obispo where all nine RVs recently moved. There was also a Thomas Fire family who had lost their home in the Thomas Fire. They actually have four RVs out living on the North Ventura Avenue and we were able to place them into a Habitat for Humanity program. And so they will also achieve permanent, long-term housing. And then lastly, some of the concerns that we heard involved criminal activities and the concern about crimes happening in this area. And because of the amazing work of our sheriff's deputies, we've been able to identify three of the RVs which were being used as for drug sales. And those individuals have been arrested and those RVs towed out of the program. And I especially want to thank Ojai Police Chief Rivera and Deputy Jason Havelka. I mean, not only have they helped curtail some of these criminal activities, but they have done just so much more. They have both spent significant time at the weekly one-stop meeting the participants, building trust with these individuals, and their efforts have been a huge boost to our collective efforts in providing these needed services and helping these individuals work on permanent housing solutions. I believe Deputy Havelka is on the call today. I would love for him just to give a quick few comments on his experiences. He just really has been incredible.
Thanks Supervisor Laver. Can you hear me?
I can.
Okay, I just wanted to thank everyone for having us on and it's been really kind of a success to see what's happened in the last six months regarding we basically went from, I believe it's close to ninety permits handed out to forty-three at this point. Some of the crimes that we've dealt with down there run from drug possession, drug sales, drug use. There's been stolen vehicle down there, vandalism, fights. And in the last few weeks, we've definitely, we've cut that number all the way down to approximately, I believe I counted forty-three this morning. And after talking with Brian this morning, it looks like we have about ninety percent of the people that are currently down there now are all have their current permit and they're involved in the program getting or checking in and getting services. So it's really great to see that the people that wanted help have gotten it and the people that have not wanted help have moved along, so.
Well, thank you Deputy Havelka. Both you and I know the deputies that work with you have just really stepped up and engaged in this program, much more than just simple law enforcement. You've almost been caseworkers at the same time. You you've almost been caseworkers at the same time. And and I appreciate, I really appreciate that that attitude towards the program. And one of the reasons that we have been so been so successful is because of of your help and and your engagement. So thank you. I want to next go over some of these before and after pictures, which I think do a good job of showing what we've been what we've been able to accomplish. If you can go to the next slide, please. Here's a before and after, taking one taken in November of last year and then January of this year, about a month after the program was implemented. Next slide, please. Another before and after in a different stretch of the North Ventura Avenue. Next slide, please. A similar before and after. And then next, I want to show you two videos. One was, if you can go to the next one, it's a video taken by a local resident on February twenty-second. And this is the Crooked Palm area. And in this video, you'll see that he points out about twenty-nine RVs in that area on that date in February. And then after this video, we're going to show how it looked last week. Okay, and then if you go to the next slide, please, this is the video taken April eighth, so approximately six weeks after that first video. You'll see the portable toilets put in place. Hey, I think those videos really do, because, you know, pictures count as a thousand words. And those videos really do show a visual of what we've been able to accomplish these past few months. If you can go to the next slide, please. This is the current overnight permit parking areas. You'll see that the one on the right side of the screen, the Crooked Palm, and then the one on the left side of the screen, those two yellow boxes are right now the two overnight parking zones allowed with with a permit. If you can go to the the next slide, please. What we hope to accomplish with this proposed amendment is removing that Crooked Palm zone from the allowed overnight zone. Judging from the videos I just showed, you can see the progress we've already made on Crooked Palm. If you can go to the next slide, please. And then if this ordinance is adopted, you can see that the green segments on the slide will become no parking anytime. The blue portion down at the bottom with the black box, you can see that's land or close to the Ventura Land Trust. And we're going to keep that no parking and able to provide them continued access to their property in the Ventura River bottom there. And I know there are huge proponents of this. If you go to the next slide, please. This really has been a multi-department program with many great partners. My staff, the District One staff, both myself and Supervisor Bennett's staff were integral in bringing this program to life. The Sheriff's Office, the Healthcare Agency, the Human Services Agency, PWA County Council, the County CEO's Office, Caltrans. I really want to thank now Assembly Member Bennett and our local CHP Representative Steve Letzky, who have both really helped us work with Caltrans in putting up no parking spots on the Caltrans, Caltrans portion of this pilot program. I also want to specifically call out and thank James Boyd with HSA, Tara Carruth with the Continuum of Care, and Chris Russell with Homeless Services, all have been actively engaged in this program and have really contributed to its success. And then lastly, I've already mentioned Kelly's Affordable Portables and and EJ Harrison and Sons, two of our private sector partners. But I particularly want to thank a member of my staff, Brian Brennan. When Brian was with my supervisor Steve Bennett, he was a really important in bringing this program to life. And since its implementation, Brian has just spent countless hours every week, usually three days a week. He spends a few hours up engaging with these individuals at one stop and in the areas they live, communicating with them, talking with them, building that trust and rapport. He's directly working with these individuals to work on long-term solutions. And he really has taken a superhuman effort to this problem. And a large reason for the successes we've seen are a direct result of Brian's hard work. So I really want to thank him and recognize him. If you go to the next slide, please. So next steps, this, there was a first wave, as I mentioned, in the where individuals in the program who were interested in receiving help, received that help. And and many of them have either moved out of the program into to other areas or hopefully into into long-term housing. And we really did make great progress with these individuals. And some of the remaining permities are going to require more help. They're going to require direct, oftentimes, mental health services and more individualized help to assist with hoarding and some other behavioral health issues, which require a little more time. And so now with this smaller permit area, we're going to really be able to focus the help and assistance we are providing. And it's also going to help with the the overall enforcement for the totality of the permities still in the program, having this single concentrated zone. And we're going to continue providing necessary services for the remaining seven months of the program. Going to try to continue working with as many individuals as we can to identify long-term solutions. And we'll continue our extensive extensive efforts to try to identify housing for anyone who's willing to to take our help and to work on a long-term plan. I want to underscore one thing, and that this program does sunset in December twenty twenty-one. And at that time, the parking zones in the in the program will revert back to no parking. And the 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 program will sunset. And so it really gives us the emphasis to focus on these next seven months. If you can go to the next slide, please. There's the recommended action that I'm asking. You can see in in the third bullet. Homelessness, as as you all know, is not an issue specific to District One, Nor Ventura County. It's an epidemic epidemic that's increasing due to a lack of affordable housing, and only made worse really by the significant economic impacts of COVID, many of which unfortunately I don't even think we've seen yet. And we're only going to see, I believe, an increase in this vulnerable population in our county. We all know there's various types of homelessness and there's no one-size-fits-all policy. And that is why I believe we need to tackle this program with a regional, all-hands-on-deck approach. And we really need to actively collaborate on a county-wide solution, be it additional funding, additional training for our law enforcement, expanded services, housing, or or all of the above. And and that is why I'm asking this board to direct county staff to continue working on these important efforts and to bring back policies and proposals to this board for us to consider. And I know Tara Carruth is on this call, and I would love for her to give some feedback on on these efforts and and what she recommends moving forward.
Thank you Supervisor Laverne. Great presentation and summary of the efforts that have been taken so far in assisting this group of people that are living in vehicle encampments. As I think many of the board members are aware, we're getting increasing numbers of concerns and complaints in all parts of the county around vehicle encampments. And it does seem that that is a real pressure point of where we're seeing some increases in community impacts and and really need designated places for people to be, for us to effectively work with them and to help our law enforcement partners and balance some of the legal constraints we have around. I don't think anyone wants to tow a vehicle that someone's living in and then pound that. And and so, because that will just set people back further. So we're just looking to, you know, work with all of our partners to develop some best practices and recommendations and really appreciate the board's support in that conversation.
All right, thank you, Ms. Carruth. And you you really have been an integral part of this program, so thank you.
Thank you.
And so in closing, I would just ask that we receive and file this presentation that we introduce and read in title only, an ordinance which was Exhibit A to our board letter, Amending Ventura County Ordinance Number Four, Five, Six, Nine, in Section seven, two, five, three, to Division Seven, Chapter One of the Ventura County Ordinance Code, designate County Council to prepare a summary of the ordinance, waive further reading, and schedule a second board hearing for April twentieth, twenty twenty-one, at eleven AM. And then lastly, direct county staff, as we just talked about, to work with the Ventura County Continuum of Care and regional partners to bring forward recommendations to our board on what those potential regional approaches and best practices may be for serving individuals living in vehicle encampments. With that, Madam Chair, I know we still might have public comments and other board questions, but I'll be prepared to make a motion after you close the public hearing.
Thank you. How inspirational. This was definitely a pilot program when it was brought to us by Supervisor Bennett. And we didn't know what the results would be. And so being able to see them, and what a great presentation to actually see those photos really helps. I know we do have at least one speaker in the public who wants to speak. But I just wanted to congratulate you and also thank Brian Brennan in your office, too. He is one of the more hands-on individuals. He gets out there and gets it done. And and what a great collaboration. Seems like we almost have more people working on this, and there are individuals out there now. And that is a real testimony to, you know, going from over ninety, you know, down to a less than half of that. So congratulations on that. So let's go to our public speakers, I believe Doug Parent. Are you on the line to speak?
I am here, yes.
Please go ahead.
Sure. So I just wanted to give my input. My name is Doug Parent. I live in Foster Park area. I started a petition a little over a year ago regarding this issue. We now have over thirteen hundred signers of it. And pretty much the the voice I'm getting from everybody is pretty much the same. They do not feel that this is the right area for a long-term solution with this kind of a plan. And so we are very happy to hear about Supervisor Laverne's suggestion that this will end at the end of the year and their intention to continue to reduce the number of RVs that are are being encamped in there. We also support the reduction in the scope of the current, the current available parking off of Crooked Palm Road to limit the amount of area that's affected by this. And just to to kind of reflect, the voices that I'm hearing is this has dramatically affected the way of life of the people that live both in Foster Park, Casita Springs, and and the other area north in Northern Ventura along the avenue. And so people really feel like this is, has inhibited their enjoyment of their of their neighborhood and in this area and feel that it's an appropriate time to end it. And if the county feels like they need to continue these kinds of services for these folks that they need to put the effort into finding more appropriate place for them to reside. And so that concludes what I had to say.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And the patience of your community and that this is cannot be permanent, right? This point is, and we're seeing these people get into services is wonderful. Okay, so we do have a, I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. I believe that's all the speakers. Let me just ask, I I see someone in the quote waiting waiting room, Carol Shelton, were you anticipating speaking on this item? Okay. All right, then she is not on the list of speakers, so I I'll go ahead and, as I said, close the public hearing. And Supervisor Laverne, you certainly can reinstate your motion. You don't have to read it all again. And then we can see what other supervisors want to say.
Great. Yeah, I would move the three bullet points on the recommended action.
Huber second the motion.
Okay. And then Supervisor Huber, did you want to comment on this also?
So I'm supporting it.
Okay, thank you. And Supervisor Ramirez, you wanted to comment?
Yes, and I want to thank you Supervisor Laverne. I didn't know about this program before. Obviously, great work by former Supervisor Bennett and of course, always by your staffer, Brian Brennan. This is an issue that's all over the county, and I know it's in LA County and lots of different places that people have no place to go once they are evicted or lose income or sick. And I I really appreciate this limited proposal to find some solutions. Obviously, there is fear we're going to have more with people losing their housing in the wake of this pandemic. And not everybody being able to find another place to live that's affordable. So you have to have a better, more regional solution. And I can feel for people. It's in in my own city of Oxnard, a neighborhood where people do don't have one single place to stay, but they have a they have a place to sleep. And they go to our parks, and they are not really those people. They are part of our community. They're people have perhaps run out of luck and really appreciate Ms. Carruth's work on this. As I appreciate everything she does. She has quite a tough job in our county. So I support this, looking for better regional solutions for everybody to alleviate the burden on any one particular neighborhood. Thank you very much for this compassionate effort.
Thank you Supervisor Ramirez. And what a wonderful partnership in in law enforcement, also all working together. It's just good to see. And as you mentioned, you know, the pandemic, but we also have that family of seven from the Thomas Fire. You know, how how wonderful that we can start working with Habitat for Humanity for them. But you you start digging deep into this and realizing that you are right. These are people in our community who have just fallen on hard times. Supervisor Long, you have your hand up?
Yes, thank you. I really want to get an understanding, maybe at the end of this, how we solve or how the county was able to help the last fifty percent. I think it's based on what we've talked with the state and federal in regards to moving people into transitional living and getting them the services they need. What those that are still remaining there, those are the trickier of the the issues. And if we can really wrap our hands, arms around that and kind of understand it, any lessons learned, I think, will be really good for all of us, as this is really truly a regional issue, state-issue role. And I agree with our supervisors that after this pandemic with the evictions and so forth, the trending is that there will be more that are homeless and more that are in in situations. So the better we can work with our continuum of care and really understand the needs of those most needy in this thing, I think will be really great. Appreciate all those that have stepped up to help out EJ Harris and and everything. The EZ Pods, we have those at our one-stop in Santa Paula, and it's been just, oh, God sent, really appreciate all of that. What a clean shower or medical care for a person really goes a long way. And so I wanted to appreciate that continuation of that as we figure out what to do with those. So thank you Supervisor Laverne and all that really brought this up.
Thank you. And I guess it will then be back to you Supervisor Laverne. You had the motion, and I believe we also had a second from Supervisor Huber. And this is actually to reduce the amount of parking specifically for this program as we have reduced the numbers in that program. So definitely a good news item as well as to continue our staff's work on this. So with that, could we please have a roll call?
Yes Supervisor Parks, I'd like to read the title into the ordinance.
Yes, please.
An ordinance amending Ventura County Ordinance Number Four, Five, Six, Nine and Section seven, two, five, three of Division Seven, Chapter One of the Ventura County Ordinance Code regulating the parking of vehicles on North Ventura Avenue, Crooked Palm Road, Canyatta Larga Road, and Casitas Vista Road. Supervisor Laverne?
Yes.
Supervisor Long?
Yes.
Supervisor Huber?
Yes.
Supervisor Ramirez?
Yes.
Chair Parks?
Yes, thank you. And that completes our open session board meeting. We do have a couple more items in our closed session. And I believe we'll have an announcement, most likely. And so I'll go now to our closed session, then back to open session for any announcements and adjournment at that time. and adjournment at that time. So with that, our board will go to closed session and more than likely see you in regular session after we conclude.
Good afternoon. This is Jeff Barnes, Chief Assistant County Counsel. The, I have an announcement out of closed session regarding item number forty-one, County of Ventura versus Godspeak Cavalry Chapel at all. The Board of Supervisors and Ventura County Health Officer have voted unanimously to drop their lawsuit and dismiss their complaint against both Godspeak Cavalry Chapel and Rob McCoy. And the county will be issuing a press release addressing the dismissal of the lawsuit. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Barnes. And that concludes our vote of supervisors meeting and we stand adjourned.